This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 30th, 2020, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 10th, 2020. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
Council President Mathieu Brown?
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and welcome everyone to our town council meeting of November 9th. Welcome to my colleagues. And we do have just a very short presentation on best practices from our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Gross. Are you ready?
Sure.
Okay, wonderful.
Every year, the state of New Jersey sends out a survey for everyone, for each and every town, to ask questions about what it considers to be best practices. And based on how you do on that survey, if you do poorly, and you may end up losing grant money, or not grant money, state aid money, some level of state aid money. And that's, of course, that's something we've never been in jeopardy of. We've always done very well with it, and this year is no exception. So this year, we're going to talk about the, we need to talk about the survey itself. And it was approximately 45 questions that they asked. And I'm pleased to say, although a little disappointed to mention, that we got every single one except one in a positive, which is the first time. And then we got so close, I was hoping that we would get a perfect score, but we did not. The one that we missed, Councilwoman McCartney will be particularly disappointed with, is that one of the questions was whether or not we had an EV charging station either already installed or in the process of being installed. Now, we do not have one, and we are not under construction with one. We have a grant approval for one. We've, you know, plans to build one, and we're as close as we could get to answering yes to that, except we can't.
We have a presentation next Wednesday. Does that count?
Unfortunately, not. But you know, it is, it's great, these, to do well. You know, we've always been kind of skeptical about some of the questions, and that hasn't changed. Sometimes what the state thinks is the best practice is frankly contrary to what we might think is a best practice. However, this year, like I said, we did very well. And so it's up on the website. The public could take a look at it, and certainly ask any questions they may have about it. And we look forward to next year.
Well, I think that we could have squeezed by by saying that there are several in the Edison parking lot, particularly in the area, the lower area where we allow our residents to park when they are on Main Street.
I thought, if I could have squeezed that in, it's a very specific, it's on township property, you know, didn't say on township or government-owned property. I couldn't have said yet. But no, it doesn't, not something. The Board of Ed had one, and we didn't, it wouldn't count, would not have counted. So.
Right here. Well, certainly, certainly appreciate that it was just missed by one. That's really great. Do you have?
It's a problem to have.
Yeah, it is. It really is. Do you, can you, I know in years past, you have been able to share with the council the survey. So whenever you have time, the letter of determination, if you can just share that with us, that would be great.
Sure.
Thank you. All right, awesome. Great to hear. Any additional comments from my council colleagues?
Well, I wanted to say, John, I do appreciate that. The same thing happened with the Sustainability Management Plan that the Stevens Institute provided for us. There were so many recommendations in there. And we're not, how do you, you know, we're not a business. So it's not that you can just go out and buy one or purchase one. As you know, even speaking about the solar panels and doing the RFQs and RFPs, it's not as easy as, you know, as we would like it to, the process to be. So we're still working on it. We do have a presentation next week. Hopefully, for the Main Street corridor, we can look at something there.
So John, let me, sorry, Councilwoman, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
I've tried to do the same with Sustainable Jersey to get the fact that we do have electric vehicle charging stations throughout the town, but they're not municipally owned and operated. So we don't get credit for that.
Gotcha. So just as a follow-up to that, Mr. Gross, just wanted to ask, I know I emailed Ms. Lepore with respect to the grant that we received and what's in line to be purchased, right? The electric, their buses, right? So with that, are, is there also money set aside to install on town property charging stations for those buses?
Oh, I, there is a certain amount of money within that, that whether it'll cover the whole thing, we don't know yet. Those particular types of EV stations are the high, will need, I suspect, will have to be the high capacity. They're more expensive to install. But we need them. So it's, you know, if we have to put a few more dollars to it, I mean, we're getting a huge grant, just getting the buses. So we're very pleased about that.
Yeah. Sorry, go ahead, Councilwoman.
I was just gonna say, the grants that are affiliated with that, there is usually a 50% match for the installation.
Yeah, so very, very excited to have heard that. Looking forward to those next steps to making sure that, you know, we're, we're at least trying to transition. But I also know that the batteries for the hybrids, as you were sharing, are quite expensive. They're about $10,000 each. And it's just because the vehicles that we have, that are hybrid vehicles, are older, it doesn't really make sense to invest in them. So hopefully, when those are out of commission, we'll be able to, you know, acquire some, some more. Okay, so I do want to start, and I should have started at the beginning, but I do want to have our meeting start with a land acknowledgement. We recognize that we reside on the land of the Lenape people, and we honor and give thanks to them for stewarding these lands for generations. With that, I am going to move into council liaisons. Councilwoman Castellino?
There we go. Okay, thank you, Council President. I'd like to start off by congratulating our 10U PAL full traveling baseball team. They have won their full championship. So great job by them. And maybe we could see what the calendar is next week. You know, we would bring them in if we were in council chamber. So maybe we could see if we could recognize them on a Zoom call. We'll see if we could figure that out, Council President. But congratulations to them, led by Coach Zach Coppola. It's great job. And in regards to holidays coming up, we have a lot going on. We have our menorah tree lighting in front of Town Hall on November 29th at 5:00 PM. So we look forward to Hanukkah starting earlier this year. Congratulations to the Recreation Department. They did an outstanding job with Halloween at Colgate Park. A lot of, a lot of children came out, even with the rain date being moved to November 2nd. The, I'm sorry, actually on Halloween at 2:00 PM. Great, great job by them. But on December 4th, Santa will be coming back visiting Town Hall, and he just won't be driving by this year. He will actually be stopping in. First stop is 9:00 AM in the morning at Washington Street School. We're gonna go back to having breakfast with Santa in a safe and social distance way. I had already spoken with Dr. Cascone. Ms. Brill had made arrangements, so we look forward to that. Santa will be in Washington School Cafeteria, I'm sorry, Santa will be in Washington School Gym, and we'll have the children, their families come through in the cafeteria first before they make a visit. We will offer our jitney tour guide. So I know Ms., our downtown director had emailed all of you, my colleagues, to see if you want to sign up to give a tour. So we have lots of slots this year for my colleagues to present on our jitney bus. So we're looking, we're very excited to bring back our holiday celebrations this year. And last but not least, Santa will be coming to Town Hall to see the mayor, and walk through, be on hand for pictures in a safe and social distance way later that evening. So we look forward to getting back to holidays here in the township. So with that, I am also due, I'm in the middle of scheduling a meeting for my Board of Ed colleagues with them. So I've been in touch with Dr. Cascone on some other items. But we will sit down and have a mid-year meeting soon to see where we're at, if they have any issues for us. I think everything's been going well with use of fields and facilities. Everything seems to be going all right. But we'll see, you know, we'll meet and wrap things up. And that's about it. I think that's all I have. Senior Services have a lot that they're offering. Please visit their website. If you haven't signed up for Senior Mailing List, please reach out to 973-325-4105. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castellino.
The menorah lighting on November 29th is at 4:00 PM. Oh, sorry. I saw a flyer that said 5:00, sorry. Well, I know that the employees usually. Yeah, thank you. Thank.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes, thank you, Council President. So we have the West Orange Arts Council, still has their very interesting and exciting street art exhibit at the Valley Center, at the West Orange Art Center, located at 551 Valley Road. That will be going on for the next few weeks. And board members have been busy setting up for the holiday boutique. So that also will be at the West Orange Art Center on Valley Road. You can visit westorange, W-O-A-R-D-S.org for more information and details, and hours of operation to find some really beautiful handmade crafts and products there that will be on display. The West Orange Chamber of Commerce is having their community annual Thanksgiving luncheon. I guess without the lunch. It will just be at lunchtime at noon. It will be a virtual free event on Wednesday, November 24th. It's from 12:00 to 1:00. The guest speaker is Zach Rosenberg. He is the CEO of SBA, and that was a foundation that raised funds to rebuild 6,000 homes that were destroyed by the Hurricane Katrina. It's just a very inspiring message that he will have. Any support for the event, though it is free, we are donating to the Holy Trinity Food Pantry. So, and more information can be found at westorangechamber.com, and also to register for that event, to find the link for the, for the virtual event. The Planning Board last Wednesday extended our redevelopment zone and unanimously approved. There was only one property, the Auto Body Shop, on the corner of Babcock and Main, that actually was determined to meet the redevelopment criteria B, which is, has significant vacancies of such building for at least two consecutive years. And it has fallen into disrepair. The Auto Body Shop facility, it's been out of business since 2013, with the storefronts and the upstairs offices are vacant. The business has not been in operation for more than two years, so the property does qualify for the criterion B. It was unanimously approved to make a recommendation to the council to expand that redevelopment area, but just to designate this one site in need of redevelopment. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. I know that there's a lot of, and I'm really grateful to the community who comes out and supports the donations to the Holy Trinity Pantry, especially around Thanksgiving. So many turkey drives, and I do want to call out one of our residents who does this annually, his turkey drive, Barry Geltzler, is posting on social media, his, his collection for the turkey drive. He amasses, I'd like to say, tremendous amount of turkeys for the communities, and he makes a lot of fun. So please make sure you support that. Council, Councilman Rutherford?
Thank you, Council President. Open Space Rec Commission met last Wednesday. We continue to advocate for open space and recreation activities in town, but we are also waiting for a confirmation for site visits from the Red Bulls. They are interested in helping us to build a mini pitch. So as soon as we can get them into town to visit some sites, we will be able to move forward that project, or at least we hope so. So keep your fingers crossed. Tomorrow night's Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board meeting, I believe, is canceled. So those that were planning on attending, it will not be held. Joint meeting will, will meet on the, will meet this Thursday, virtually. And that is what I call the Sewer Commission. I think John Gross, or maybe was Ken Kaiser called it that as well. But that is where we collaborate with other towns to handle our wastewater and sewer. And I am actually learning quite a bit about that in this time of year, where we start to get snow and additional rainfall is an important time. So I'm actually excited about that. I know that may sound crazy, but, but I am. And I think that, oh, last thing, West Orange Young Democrats are continuing to advocate, not just in West Orange, but around the state, for subpoena power for civilian complaint review boards. I am, I continue to be impressed by both Barum Meritu and Anya Dillard, two of our outstanding young leaders in West Orange, who have taken the lead in some of those issues, especially with regard to subpoena power for CCRB. So kudos to them, and I encourage them to keep up the good work. That's it for me, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Williams?
How are you? Thank you, Council President. West Orange, we have no news to report from the Rent A Board. That meeting was canceled due to a lack of quorum for this month. They will meet again in December. And I'm sure there'll be some type of update on holiday events for the residents. The Historic Preservation Commission meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, virtually. Zoom instructions are online at westorange.org. And the Rent Leveling Board was scheduled to meet on 11/4. I have to follow up. I was unable to attend that meeting, and I'm not absolutely certain that it was held. But I will bring those updates at our next council meeting on the 23rd. Also, just talking about Christine's Kitchen and food insecurity, I, along with friends, have volunteered to do the lunch on Saturday after Thanksgiving. So if there's anyone who would like to volunteer, we are accepting donations, as well as volunteers to prep the food on that Saturday. We will be serving some hot meals on the Saturday after Thanksgiving. And we're working with the county to see if we can get some COVID shots and flu shots as well on that date with the mobile ban. So stay tuned for more information. Thank you, Council President.
They did not have the Rent Leveling Board meeting. It was canceled because they didn't have a quorum.
Thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Yeah, I was gonna say the same. I know that, at least my appointee has reached out on two occasions because there isn't a quorum. And obviously, considering especially our residents who have been displaced, you know, I think those meetings are really important. So I was gonna ask you, Councilwoman Williams, is that, has that been discussed? I know you didn't make it to the last, well, the last meeting wasn't held. But any discussion amongst your board with respect to assistance and supports that the Rent Leveling Board can give them?
So I would say no, there hasn't been any discussion. And then I would probably take a step back and just review what the purpose of the Rent Leveling Board would be. And if no one brings a grievance, either on the landlord or the tenant's side, to us, usually that's how we function, once someone brings something to our attention. Certainly, I've seen social media and the news, and I do know that with the residents in question, that they are seeking legal counsel. So, but no, to your question, we haven't reached out or done anything. We actually haven't met. So if Mr. Smoraldo has done anything independently, which he really does, he always brings everything to the board, then I wouldn't have that information.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. And then I, looking at the time, it's 7:02. So I will just briefly tell you that something on your, on our agenda this evening, with respect to contracting a third party, has to do with the Joint Insurance Municipal Fund, which is a fund that municipalities belong to, that assists with risk management. And recently, they have provided that municipalities can go out and bid for their own third-party risk manager, if you will. Well, it's not a risk manager. Is that, Mr. Gross, can you just briefly comment on that?
Yeah, this is for the third-party administrator.
Administrator.
The third-party administrator generally takes care of the business of administering over workers' complaints, particularly and including the, the management of the medical care of our employees, to ensure that they, they receive optimum care and have an opportunity to get back on the job as quickly as possible. So it's a very important position. And since we now have the opportunity, we're gonna take a look. And we, we've not made any decision or commitment to make a recommendation to the council. But in order for us to even look, we need this initial action to utilize competitive contracting for this purpose.
I'm always very excited about that opportunity. So that's also came from the, our meeting with Councilman Rutherford. I saw your handle. I was just gonna say your name, too.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to circle back on two things quickly. One, I've been in contact with my appointee to the Rent Leveling Board, too, and I've encouraged her to encourage the body to meet anyway, even if they don't have a quorum. You may not be able to vote, but we can at least figure out what the issues are and what has been, if anything, brought to the board and what the board wants to be proactive about. So if that's possible, I don't think there's anything that would prohibit them from having a meeting without a quorum, as long as they did not vote. I would, I would really strongly encourage that because of the issue at 275 Northfield. And we can certainly see if there's, you know, I don't know what the board can do proactively, but I would encourage them to at least consider. Second thing is, and this is just a point of information, I think the Rent A Board may have met this morning. I don't know that for certain, but I do believe they met this morning. I don't know if anyone else can confirm that. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. And then the other, the last thing I will leave you with, considering the time, OS-PAC Board did have their meeting yesterday. I'm very excited with the tremendous amount of work that these volunteers put forth, especially, I mean, they always do, but especially during a COVID season. They opened early to be able to facilitate for high schools and their performances, which they were, as you can imagine, after being on lockdown for so long, being able to actually perform to a live crowd and open space. That was amazing for them. But they are working on their financials, and they will be doing their reporting, their annual reporting to the council. As soon as they're done, that will be sometime after November. But very excited for them. And wait, I know I said that was the last thing, but I also want to take this opportunity to thank Madam Clerk for all of your hard work, because I know election seasons are always busy. However, with the change of the new equipment and the callouts from poll workers and all of the other complaints, nobody knows just how hard you work on Election Day. And I just wanted to highlight that, because I think it's really important that we all understand, you know, while we're all excited out there at the polls, you're busy working all day long. So thank you so very much for doing the training. And certainly, we look forward to some feedback with respect to, you know, how we did as a municipality and how we can do better. So thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Okay, seeing that it is now 7:06, I do want to start our public meeting, Madam Clerk.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 30th, 2020, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 10th, 2020. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
Council President Mathieu Brown?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And to the public, this is a reminder that we are starting our public comment portion. Those who would like to speak, please be sure to use the Raise Your Hand function. You do not have to wait for someone to finish speaking, as you will be called on in the order that your hand is raised. You have five minutes to speak. I'm gonna ask and remind you to please state your name and address for the record. Madam Moderator, are we ready?
Yes, ma'am. Joe Fagan is.
Can we, I'm so sorry. Can we put the timer on?
Yes, I'm trying to get it.
Okay. That's perfect.
Yeah, I can't get it to go.
It doesn't look like it has the plate. Is that the picture of it, or?
Yeah, should be a five minutes, also.
Yeah, it's been, it's been strange. I'm not sure why it's acting weird.
If everyone in the public could just bear with us for a moment, technical difficulties, I know this is something that work from home has taught us to understand and be patient with. So greatly appreciate your patience while we figure this out.
Council President, while Madam Moderator is working on that, if you would allow me to say my comments, I will be less than five minutes.
Go, go for it. Thank you, Mr. Fagan, and welcome.
Thank you, Madam President, and a good evening to you and your council colleagues and all members of the administration in attendance. I'm Joe Fagan, Public Mission and Public Information Officer, and thank you for this opportunity to briefly address the West Orange public this evening. First, I would just like to say to Councilwoman Castellino that I'm very surprised to hear the name of Zach Coppola mentioned. It wasn't all that long ago. I was watching him play with my nephew for select towing. So it just makes me feel older, but it speaks volumes to the enduring aspect of the PAL here in West Orange. I would like to start tonight by drawing attention to CPR, which is an emergency life-saving procedure performed when the heart stops beating. Immediately administering CPR can double or triple chances of survival after cardiac arrest. Knowing CPR is a requirement for some professions, such as lifeguards, childcare providers, and healthcare assistants. But every ordinary citizen who is certified in CPR can potentially save a life. The West Orange Fire Department will be offering a CPR certification course this Saturday, November 13th, from 10:00, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, at the West Orange Emergency Operations Center located at 25 Mount Pleasant Avenue. There is no cost for West Orange residents, however, you must be 16 years of age and older. Anyone listening that is interested or knows someone that might be can call Captain Stewart at the West Orange Fire Department at 973-419-3908. I'll repeat that number. It's 973-419- It's 973-419-3808. World events often move fast, but it's hard to match the pace and power of change that occurred in 1989. On November 9th of that year, a pivotal event in world history occurred. I'm talking about one of the most memorable scenes in recent history as the free world witnessed the fall of the Berlin Wall. For that reason, today is World Freedom Day. It started in 2001 and is celebrated on this day every November 9th. It commemorates the fall of the Berlin Wall and the end of communist rule in Central and Eastern Europe. The Iron Curtain, by which it was known by for generations, simply rusted into oblivion. I point this out because our freedom would not be possible without the enduring sacrifice of our many veterans and their family in military service around the world. On this Thursday, November 11th, 11th, at 11:00 a.m. at War Memorial Park, the annual West Orange Veterans Day Ceremony will make a triumphant return from COVID exile. The ceremony in front of West Orange Town Hall will exhibit renewed resolve and profound purpose as we honor our veterans. I would like to invite all those at the meeting tonight to attend as we pay fitting tribute to all the men and women of our armed forces. I am also grateful and honored to say that I will be making a few remarks in place of Mayor Parisi, who is unable to attend. For those listening tonight unable to come, the ceremony will be broadcast via Facebook Live from the downtown West Orange Lions Facebook page. Thank you, Madam President. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan, and you are at two minutes exactly. Madam Moderator, how are we doing with the timer? Any success?
Yes, I've reloaded it. Can you hear me? Yeah.
Sure.
I'm going to try again.
Wonderful.
Okay, now let's
And if we can just move Mr. Fagan back to
Okay, almost there. Second person to speak, the phone number is ending in 3052. State your name and address for the record, please. 3052.
Good evening. Name is Lawrence Dominguez, President, PBA Local 25, 1 Carey Street, West Orange, New Jersey. I'm calling in this evening. Good evening. I'm calling in this evening, reaching out to our residents to inform them on the township's recent mandate policy that went into effect. As of today, the West Orange Police Department has nine officers that are out on unpaid leave status. These officers have submitted either religious or medical exemption requests that have, that have, as of this time, been afforded no reasonable accommodations for. I would like to start off by going back to the very beginning of this pandemic. Our, our members not only answered the call, but went above and beyond what they were required to do in those, in those times. Our members, in the beginning, while, as you saw in news reports, many townships were struggling and having difficult times procuring the necessary PPE and protective equipment that was necessary to respond to this pandemic, were able to procure nearly 15,000 N95 respirators that were turned over to the township. And those respirators were provided to all township employees to assist in the response to this pandemic. Our members also coordinated efforts with management of local businesses for the procurement of disinfectant wipes and sprays and other necessities that were needed at that time, so the township could have them available to our members so they can do their jobs safely. Not only were they responding to calls during the pandemic, but they also, on their own time, when they could have been safely at home, decided to volunteer and ensure that some of the members in our community that were in need at the time were also assisted. They volunteered at our local food pantry. When our food pantry needed assistance in obtaining more items, our members volunteered, sometimes even using their own vehicles, to go to the state food bank to retrieve those items, bring them back to the food bank, and continue to volunteer and hand those items out to residents that were in need. Now, as I speak to you today, approaching the holiday season, these nine members have basically been treated like dispensable equipment by the township and just discarded to the side. They've been placed on unpaid leave status. They're not getting paid going into the holiday season. Some of these members are single mothers. Some of these members have newborn children. Some of these members are just starting their young families and are simply achieving the American dream by obtaining their first homes, possibly. Unfortunately, they're now going into the holidays and dealing with all this without a paycheck. Not only without a paycheck, but also while trying to figure out how are they going to pay to maintain their active health insurance coverage for their families and their young children, as they're not getting paid. I am calling to urge the Township Council to put, put in, put, put an end to what is happening. I implore the council to speak with the township, its leaders, and try to show support for our members who desperately need the support. I'm also calling on our township residents to show support by reaching out to the mayor's office and reaching out to the office of John Gross, the Township CFO, and imploring that these members be returned to duty as soon as possible. There are other first responders, not just throughout Essex County, but throughout the state of New Jersey, who have been afforded reasonable accommodations for their religious or medical exemptions, such as wearing a face mask, routine weekly testing, and social distancing when possible. These are reasonable accommodations that our members have requested and are not being provided. Those reasonable accommodations will afford them to perform the essential functions of their duties and maintain their employment and come back to work and continue to serve the residents of West Orange and their community. Thank you.
Thank you. The council will respond after public comment is completed. Thank you.
Next up is Joe Krikoviac.
Good evening, Joe Krikoviac, Grand Avenue.
Good evening.
Last council meeting, we heard that the mayor had placed 18 or 19 employees on unpaid leave for noncompliance with his vaccine mandate. What is the exact number? Since we've now heard what the number of police is, which I understand is about 10% of the police force, how many fire personnel are affected? How many police personnel did we have before this? And how many fire personnel did we have before these employees were put on unpaid leave? Have any of these numbers changed since the last council meeting? Has the status of this situation changed in any way? At the last council meeting, I believe there was discussion of a meeting of council members with the mayor over this issue. When was that meeting and what were the results? How has the work schedules for the uniformed services been impacted, particularly police? What are your projections of excess overtime because of these reductions? Are you planning to hire additional personnel in these areas? Has this impacted services or coverage? And how long is this situation expected to continue? Separately, why does Town Hall remain closed when so many nearby municipalities have reopened? Separately, how many of the former residents of the apartments at 275 Northfield found alternate housing? What is the status of the mayor's later letter to the governor requesting help to address environmental concerns in the week of the 275 Northfield slide? I request the letter be posted to the township website so residents can read it. What are council members' positions on posting this letter to the township website? The Star Ledger reported November 8th that lawyers for some of the former residents have sent a letter to the township advising of potential litigation. Do you have any indication of the potential grounds for such litigation? Has the township entered into settlement discussions? I requested you post this letter to the township website so that residents can read it. What are council members' positions on posting this letter to the township website? Separately, is there anything new since the last council meeting regarding downtown redevelopment, efforts to find a replacement redeveloper, the proposed litigation settlement with PRISM, or anything having to do with Phase 1? Separately, I believe this is the third time I've asked the council administration about the issue with 20 Ashland Avenue, one of the properties in the downtown redevelopment area the council has authorized to buy as part of the $20 million purchase. 20 Ashland Avenue, public records show assessment, an assessment of $35,900, while they also show that PRISM purchased the property for $398,250 in 2007. Just want to know, are those values correct? And if you know of any reason why the assessment is less than 10% of the 2007 market value? And also, what is the current appraised value? Separately, I want to give congratulations to the administration for the excellent auto report and the state survey results. Separately, welcome and best wishes to Ms. McGovern, as planning, new planning board attorney. What happened with the previous attorney who hasn't been there for very long, less than two years? There are two resolutions on the agenda tonight, 278 and 279, for emergency road repairs totaling about $450,000. Were those contracts competitively bid? Resolution 282-21 to purchase two HVAC units for just under $50,000. The resolution mentions that there are cost savings involved with the purchase. I wanted to know what those cost savings are and how that was determined. Councilwoman McCartney mentioned the property in the downtown redevelopment area. What is the plan for this property? Ordinance 2664-21 has a $500,000 emergency appropriation request. What's the status of expected retirements? Ordinance 2661-21, please post a redline version showing all changes in wording from the previous version of the ordinance. And why do we need a cap of $5,000 for a building permit? Have we ever charged more than that? Or is it likely we might in the near future or have done it in the near past? Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you.
Next up is Sally. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sally Malanga, Ridge Road. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to second the sentiments and the requests of former Councilman Joe Krikoviac on the list that he just presented to you of concerns. And I would like to speak on behalf of our Green West Orange members. We are requesting an independent investigation of the rockslide below the Seton Hall Prep ballfields. And I'm wondering, what is the council's sense of a plan to move forward for the township? Some thoughts that I'd like you to consider. Condemn and restore the Seton Hall Prep fields. Restore the Essex House property where there was also a landslide. Secure the Mount Pleasant Forest with an acquisition. Strengthen the steep slope ordinance and the tree ordinance as those affect directly the ability of our township and its trees to absorb floodwaters. I'm requesting that you consider a moratorium on any projects that are proposed or have been approved for steep slope, and that would include West Essex Highlands, Cube Smart, and the one that's being considered by the zoning board now. It should not even be considered. I'm also requesting that you survey the entire township for treacherous conditions and areas in which we can do remediation. I believe I made public comment before, at a previous meeting, requesting that we get flood control, swales, tree planting, going in every section of town that can accommodate it in order to prevent any further rockslides or flooding of our township. So I look forward to hearing from you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Malanga.
And next up is Charity B. Charity, are you there?
Um, I don't, I don't see her listed.
Oh, I'm sorry. And now just for the record, 3980. Are you, you're speaking now, 3980?
Is listed in the attendees?
Where is Charity?
I'm muted.
Okay, Charity, are you muted? Charity? Um, Madam Moderator, can we bring Charity back on to connect her to?
She's connecting now to audio.
Okay, can we all just mute it so that we can listen to one voice? Thank you.
Okay, Charity should be ready to go.
She's still trying to connect.
She should be all set.
Yeah, she may be having issues on her end. Let's give her a few more seconds and then we can just come back to her if there's someone else that was going to speak.
Hello?
Hi, Charity. Good to hear your voice.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record, and you may start now.
My name is Charity Bracy. I'm one of the residents from 275 Northfield Avenue. Hello. I was just calling in to say that when we met with the mayor and council after being forced to leave our homes in the middle of the night, he promised that we would not be left abandoned or homeless. His words were exactly, as long as it takes, 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, we are not going to abandon you. When I spoke with Laura Van Dyke last Tuesday before we were moved to different hotels for the weekend, I informed her that while many of the residents were searching vehemently for housing, and many of us have found housing, several of us, including myself, wouldn't be able to move into our new apartments until late December or early January. I asked where that left us. Her response was, you have the mayor's word that you would not be left homeless. Yet, last night, after a debacle of them turning off our water over the weekend, I was trying to work in there, we received a notice from Laura and the mayor stating that we would not be helped after December 4th. Many of us are rushing, excuse me, and scrambling to try and get our things out of our apartments, because we still have to make income. We are going to work during the week, and we were trying to move out of our apartments on the weekend. So now I have taken off three days of work, including tomorrow, because we were informed that the water would be shut off, and we have not been officially informed that they will be locking us out completely on November 21st. And now we're being told before the holidays that we won't have anywhere to stay. And I just wanted it on record for the residents to be aware and for city council, because it was on record what the mayor promised us. And it's really unfair, because none of us did anything to put ourselves in this position. I've paid my rent at 275 on time for 12 years. We have residents that have lived there for 31 and 32 years. I grew up in West Orange. I graduated from Hazel Elementary School under Principal Eckhart. I went to Roosevelt Middle School, and I went to West Orange High School. And as an adult, I made my way back here, and this is the only place that I've lived as an adult. And I just want it on record that the way we're being treated, while we understand that funds are not indispensable and that they eventually run out, that there was a promise made to us, and it's not being kept. Thank you.
Thank you, Charity.
Any other members of the public? Any other members of the public? It looks like it's just Anthony Puglisi. Anthony.
Hi, good evening. This is Anthony Puglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiVincenzo. I just want to make you aware of some upcoming events. First, on this Saturday, November 13th, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon, we have a paper shredding and used tire collection day. It's a great way to remove items from our waste stream and have them either recycled or discarded in an environmentally friendly way. And that's going to be at the Public Works Facility at 99 Bradford Avenue in Cedar Grove, which is the site of all our other recycling initiatives. I'm pleased to report again, the Holiday Light Spectacular Turtle Bag Zoo is returning this year. It'll be open, the first night is November 19th. It'll be open weekends only, November 19th to the 21st, the 26th to the 28th, and December 3rd to 5th. And then it'll be open every night from December 10th to the 31st, and that would be from 5:00 PM to 9:00 AM. It is a free event, but we do ask people to bring non-perishable food items, gently worn winter coats and toys. This all goes to local food banks and organizations that help people in need. Also returning after the pandemic is our Holiday House Tour, which is on the weekend of December 4th and 5th. It is a little truncated as some facilities have not reopened completely. So there's only about six houses this year, but we hope this will pique everyone's interest, and we'll be back even bigger and better next year. And finally, I couldn't give a report without providing some information about vaccines. As always, we do have the three vaccination centers open six days a week, which that includes the Kmart in West Orange. We have recently begun administering booster shots and third doses for people ages 18 years older. We have also been administering pediatric doses for children ages 5 to 11. Today, I believe, was the fifth day that we've been doing it, and we've already exceeded about 3,500 vaccines. I haven't gotten the results for today, so that number will be a little higher. And the pediatric hours are 4:00 to 7:00 PM, Monday to Friday, and then 9:00 to 5:00 on the weekends. Because of a limited, a limited number of pediatric doses, we are requesting, if parents or guardians want their children to be vaccinated, that they make appointments at essexcovid.org or by calling our call center at 973-877-8456. All the events that I mentioned are on the county website or will be placed there shortly. And the county website is essexcountynj.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Puglisi. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment before we close public comment? Please raise your hand.
Not seeing anyone.
Okay, this closes public comment at this time. Thank you, everyone who participated in our public comment. And as you all know, we do take some time to respond to all the council members to your concerns and your comments that were brought up. I'll start with Mr. Lawrence Dominguez. First, I want to say thank you for your service to our community. I know your work and that of your brothers and sisters in uniform is not an easy one. I also want to thank you for your work as a leader in your union and organization. I really understand the difficulty in coming to a place where your employers are, you know, but I also applaud your efforts in speaking out on behalf of your members. As you know, we did have this discussion when one of our firefighters came on last week and shared those same concerns that you have expressed. I have been at convention all week, but I do have tentative schedule, Mr. Gross and another council member to join us, and we're having a discussion meeting with the township physician to ask questions, but my position remains the same. I do agree that our first responders were on the front lines when there was no vaccines, when there were very little protections for you all, and agree that you have all gone above and beyond to ensure that our residents had food at a time where they could not sometimes access work or lost jobs because of the pandemic. I am supportive of the position to allow some accommodations because we are seeing the same is done across the state with our teachers, and our teachers are in classrooms with students of up to 25 and sometimes more. Unfortunately, at the high school, that is the case. So I, I am supportive of having those conversations on Thursday. And that's, that's all I will say for now, since I haven't had the conversation, but I will certainly follow up with you. Mr. Krokowiak, you had several questions with respect to the number of uniform and employees altogether. I'm under the impression, because it was a conversation I had earlier with Mr. Gross, that those numbers have not changed. There are seven fire, please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Gross, seven firefighters who are on unpaid leave, nine police, and one non-uniform employee. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Gross?
That is correct, and that is down, that is down a couple from the last.
Two, because the last, the last estimate was 19, so certainly down by two, but still, once again, I am supportive of the opportunity for them to have exceptions. I will allow, when we're all done, I'm sure Mr. Gross can talk about what the overtime numbers are and what that work schedule looks like depends on, you know, who's available to work. But yes, there is overtime. I'm not aware of the expense as of yet. I'm sure Mr. Gross can answer that question as well as how long does, is this expected to continue? That is something for the administration to answer. I hope that it ends sooner than later so our, our police, fire, and all employees can get back to work. Mr. Krokowiak, you also asked what the council members' position to posting the letter was that the mayor sent to the state. As you know, my, my letter has been posted. That letter I shared on my social, social media page, on my council page, and I shared it on all the other websites as well. I'm clearly supportive of that. The letter with respect to, it's a letter of representation from an attorney whose name I cannot recall at this time, but as you know, from your time and experience as a council member, we do not litigate matters in public. So my position on posting that letter is a strong no. A status on the downtown redevelopment, we don't yet have one. I will say that you also asked about the 20 Ashland Avenue and the assessments. I don't have those numbers in front of me, so I can't answer that at this time. You asked if those values were correct. I do not know off the top of my head. With respect to the emergency road repair where they bid, the initial jobs were bid, but because of Hurricane Ida, there were some emergency repairs that had to take place. Some streets were worse, in worse conditions than others, so that was added to these, hence the change order. The, what is the plan for the downtown redevelopment? Have we found a redevelop, a redeveloper yet? No. We have not intend, we have not looked for one at this time. As you know, we're still just expanding the number of properties that are to be included in the redevelopment zone. So until that happens, there is no plan, but I will say that I have had conversations with the mayor, with Mr. Gross in moving towards the direction of hosting a charrette for what is downtown Main Street, the redevelopment area. Those are preliminary conversations. However, I am happy to hear that that is something that we are going to be exploring. So happy to share that information when we receive it. And while this was not asked, I will add to that anyway with respect to Rock Spring. While I did ask for a charrette to be held for Rock Spring, that is something that we are going to wait on because we still don't have a development plan. But it is my understanding that if the matter comes to having to provide the application to Green Acres, that round of funding will begin in spring, I'm sorry, in the springtime. And we are going to make every effort to make that application timeline. Whether we have a plan or not, it is my understanding that we can carve out the areas where, and again, let me just be very clear, I am not promising anything. I am just saying that it could be an option that we just cut out where the parking lot is, where the clubhouse is, where the pool is, and preserve the rest of it. So those are the conversations that we're having, but happy to see that there is interest in having the charrette for the downtown redevelopment area. So I look forward to that. With respect to the questions that you had on the resolutions, we'll discuss those at the time when we discuss resolutions. I'm sure that I missed some of what you were asking about because I didn't write as quickly as I thought I could. So apologies for missing any of your questions. Ms. Malanga, requesting an independent investigation, but I have requested from legal, and our attorney is not here with us, our township attorney is not here with us at this time because he is away. However, I did request of legal to be sure to brief the council because some of us were not on the council at the time of the approvals for the Seton Hall Prep fields. But it is important for us to understand what happened. I understand that there were 27 meetings at the zoning board and over 90 hours of recordings. I've asked, if possible, that we transcribe those recordings because they do not, they tape them, which is archaic. But in order for us to better understand as we move through this process of strengthening our zoning ordinance to include the slope and ridge lines, I think it's something that we need to become familiar with that process. What happened if, and please let me be very clear, if you're going to quote me, I am not saying that the township erred. What I'm saying is I would like a better understanding of what happened, how it happened, and if we err, then we need to correct that and make sure that, you know, moving forward, that doesn't happen. But let me be very clear, because I don't want to see a quote that council president said. Council president is asking to be briefed. She's asked for reports that were provided for expert testimony to be shared with all of my council colleagues. So as we move in this space, we understand how to strengthen our ordinances. But that is ultimately the plan to move forward is to, to strengthen that ordinance. I know that Councilman Rutherford during the last council meeting did ask for a moratorium on, on development until we strengthen our ordinances. I legally don't know if we can, and I'm not willing to, to even consider that at this time without our legal department to advise on what happens when there has already been approvals and you implement a moratorium. That's not a question that I can answer. But certainly, we'll have that put forward to legal. And with respect to your asking for the survey, I also included that email that I sent to the administration and the mayor on October 27th, asking for a townwide survey, looking to retain geotechnical engineers. Because of our topography, I think it is important. Because of climate change, I think it is necessary that we, we, we proceed in a proactive manner versus a reactive manner. I know that the administration is supportive of that. I also understand the depth and breadth of what that entails is going to have some financial implications that we as a township and our budget may not be able to wholly afford, which is why the administration has sent that letter out to the state, to Governor Phil Murphy and Lieutenant Sheila Oliver. However, as you know, I'm sure that their focus was on the elections, but I did forward that letter once again to Assemblyman McKeon and asked him to please follow up on that letter. And I'm sure that our council colleagues will do the same in advocating for the state to be a good partner with us in this because it's necessary and certainly far beyond our own capacity. So that is the plan moving forward. Charity, I'm sending you big, strong hugs. I was there. I know that that's what the mayor said. We received the letter when you received the letter, and it is something that I'm sure Councilman Rutherford reached out to me, and we've had some discussions. I, I don't know what's left in the Mayor Sunshine Fund. I do know that I received a copy of an invoice from Clarion, with Clarion, which is where some of our residents are staying, and that is the least expensive because we have arrangements with them. And that bill until from October 27th through December 4th is, is over $55,000. We've already paid from the town, the Mayor Sunshine Fund, over $35,000 with a balance to that hotel alone of $15,000. I'm not giving you excuses, Charity. I am still committed to helping in whatever way we can. The GoFundMe that we started that I asked Jonathan Redwine, who's a dear friend and resident in town, has accumulated over $9,000. We have a resident in town that gave us $4,400 for ShopRite food cards that while may seem insignificant, I know it is a help to the residents. That's not putting a roof over your head. That's not paying for your storage or your moving costs. I, I can't imagine the weight of, of all of this uncertainty for you, but I am hopeful that my council colleagues have continued to reach out to their resident, assigned residents to help place them because that is a priority. I don't know. I think that that, that conversation will happen under New Business with Mr. Gross. Just have a few questions. I know some of my council colleagues also have some questions. But I, I want you to understand that while there are depleting resources with respect to paying for the hotel stays, and there are four hotels where, where our residents are staying, it does not mean that the township is going to abandon you. The resources that we have provided as far as raising funds for meals and, and all of the support that we're able to provide, we're, we're going to continue to do that. But again, we'll enter into that conversation under New Business with Mr. Gross, and just had some questions for him. Mr. Puglisi, thank you for, I really, I, I was there for my booster at the Kmart site, and I thought that the pediatric area was well, well-appointed for the youngsters. Great job to the county as always, and hope that everyone who can be vaccinated does get vaccinated so we can move past the space that we're in. And I will leave it at that. I am going to call on my council colleague, Casselina, for her response.
Thank you, Council President. Okay, I'm going to start with Charity. You know, so sorry, very tough with, with what you're going through and with all the residents are going through. And, and kudos to everyone in town who's been going above and beyond to, to give assistance. I, I know getting a letter must have been really hard. But in the letter also, to, to be fair to Laura Van Dyke and the mayor, you know, we're not abandoning anybody. Laura has been working seven days a week on this, trying to facilitate. a very, very unexpected event for all of you and and a lot of emotion. And we're gonna continue to, you know, to 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 look, to reach out to our contacts. Hopefully another and I I know just the, it's gotta be so tough when with the unknown, just trying to find a home and a lot of anxiety. So we're, no one's abandoning you. And and we'll continue to work with you. The funds, as Council President had said, with the Sunshine Fund also goes for other assisted needed, much needed assistance in in the community as well. So you know, just hang in there, hang in there. We're all with you. And we'll continue to work as a community to get you through this. So I I feel bad about all the anxiety, but we're gonna we're there for you. Let's see. My former colleague, Councilmember Koviac. Thank you for all your thoughtful questions this evening. I thank Council President. I am crossing them out as she spoke. If there's anything we missed. You know, you could also pick up the phone and call us. I I mean, I hope we still have those kind of relationships if we we missed anything. But you riled off many questions within five minutes. I saw Mr. Gross writing a lot down. And you really peppered us with a lot of questions this evening. So if anything was missed, you know, we reach out, you could also pick up the phone as well. We more than glad to to answer any, everything here. Sally. You know, I, you know, we we spoke a little bit last week. I I'm supportive of definitely strengthening this deep slope ordinance. So I know Councilwoman McCartney has already been working on that. And, you know, so I'll be, I'll be supportive of that. So and as Council President said, not to, you know, reiterate everything. But yeah, some kind of study needs to be done. Hopefully the state will be able to assist us. We're talking a very costly, not that it's not worth the cost, but a very costly endeavor. And you know, we'll, we'll, we'll see what occurs. But of course, you wanna look at these situations, you know, see what's going on. And, you know, address it and do what we can to get to get things done. In regards of I do, Council President, want to talk a little further. You you mentioned hosting the charrette. You know, we, we, we didn't call it that five years ago when Kevin Cruz hosted one with Economic Developer. But the downtown had done that about five years ago. We had four hundred residents respond to it. I checked with Ms. Brill. And she has some data she could share from what we did four years ago. It cost about eighteen thousand dollars. At the time, Main Street, New Jersey, which is no longer in existence, helped to fund it. And I think the downtown a portion of it cost eighty five hundred. But Kevin Cruz, who was a former a member of the Downtown Alliance, had hosted of something of that magnitude. And we could talk about that later on, but and that was the second one. They did downtown, I think about ten years ago, all the stakeholders came. I know I was on the Board of Ed. I represented the board at that time. And, you know, so that, you know, we, you know, we'll continue to get input from the community naturally. And Mr. Puglisi, as always, thank you and the community. I mean, you and the county for all that you do for us and you've been very busy. This is a busy time of year. And Mr. Fagan as well. I know you have a big event with Veterans Day. We want to thank you for help organizing that, Joe Brennan, Sherry Quark. I know it'll be a beautiful event. Unfortunately, I can't make it this year. But to honor our veterans is special. And Officer Dominguez. I've been advocating to, excuse me, advocating to administration. When this mandate first came down. I I know it's hard. It's very frustrating. I know the mayor has taken a lot of calls from the community. I know the media doesn't help out there with information or misinformation that's out there. I, for one, am, you know, pro vaccination. I I as most of you know, I had the experience, horrible experience of watching my mom pass on my cellphone last January from COVID. I've had family members affected by it. I've had a recent family member who was vaccinated become effective from unvaccinated person. It it it's tough out there. There's, there's a lot going on. But at that same time, when I was council president and I saw our first responders and our, our, our town employees out in the public at the food pantry, because I was with them that day, that they were there and and came to assist and just going above and beyond. And now we're here is just heartbreaking. And I, I asked administration to continue to have talks with with our township physician and to to reverse this decision. I think we could safely have our first responders out there with the PPE. Again, I want to see the data of contact tracing. Did any of our residents contact trace back to any of our first responders? So but yeah, I I see the mayor's side. I I spoke with him. He comes from a place where he's concerned about our residents and 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 our staff. So just very terrible times. And I beg administration to try to work this out for our employees because it it breaks my heart where they're at right now. And it it shouldn't be. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Casselino. Councilwoman McCartney.
Council President, I wanted to say that I thought you did an outstanding job, a very thorough job on the responses to the public comment this evening. I do want to just, even just to pick up where Officer Dominguez just said that when I did see the letter. Though I do agree with mandate and the vaccinations, I do also understand the logic behind the testing and the what if while you're waiting for the results, that did make sense to me. But after, at our last council meeting, or after when I did see that letter, I did call the administration to ask about a reasonable accommodation for medical considerations. I think that that is something that we should consider and continue to discuss. I do appreciate the fact that you are going to meet with Dr. Kelly. We did have that conversation, so I look forward to hearing about the mixed messages that we were receiving between the town and the Board of Education. So I really do want to hear what comes out of that meeting. The questions that former Councilman Joe Krakowiac asked, I was remiss that the planning board did accept the resignation of the Planning Board Attorney Kenny McPherson after a very brief stay and an outstanding stay on the planning board. He has accepted a position at a new firm and the new firm does not allow outside work. So we did approve anonymously the new resume. And I'm sorry, I was remiss when I, I did have that in my notes on planning board council liaison announcements. And all of the other questions, I know that that has come up before about twenty Ashland Avenue, I believe, all of those lists. That was part of the settlement agreement. And that was the response that we had last time from our town attorney. The Chief and John, as you said, can talk about the overtime and how we are handling the unpaid leave of absences. And Sally Malanga, I don't know if she was on the last call, but we did talk about, I did speak to the engineering department and the engineering firm that has helped on our applications to strengthen our ordinance on steep slopes. So that is on their radar and that's what they will consider. And I do appreciate the administration sending the letter to the state that the land survey is far beyond our means and to have the state come in and and complete such a task. Charity is on my list of one of the residents. We have spoken. I do know that she and others that are on my list did receive, one is in a new apartment and two others have located other apartments, but they will not be available until December. So I do hope that this discussion that we have, that we continue to seek alternate resources for these residents. That letter, though, it certainly was bittersweet. That was the note that was in that. But certainly not giving up on any of the residents. And I just hope that we continue the discussion to find other options. And as I said, to seek alternate resources for them. And always a thank you to Anthony and the Holiday Lights. I know everyone is looking forward to that and the Halloween trick or treating event, I understand, was quite successful also. So such a popular destination. And thank you to Joe Fagan. I did not know today was World Freedom Day. I always like fun facts. Thank you to the West Orange Fire Department for the CPR training. That is a necessity and yes, a requirement for me and my staff. And I look forward to the Veterans Day ceremony. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President. So I'll start with Mr. Dominguez. I I don't want to reiterate everything that's already been said, but I I I do want us to be aware that this Thursday, both Council President and myself will meet with the administration, including the Medical Director to discuss this mandate, the and the potential for reasonable accommodation. The council, Town Council has, all five of us have expressed support for some level of accommodations. I am grateful that the the administration is willing to provide a forum to kind of work through that. I'm disappointed that it is still not had, it still not has happened. But I am glad that it is scheduled for this Thursday. So we will continue to advocate. We will continue to work on this because we do value your service. And it's one thing to say it. But we are in a position to show. And it, you know, you can tell people you love them. You can tell people you care all day long. But your actions speak louder than words. So we are certainly putting or trying to put our actions first, not just what we say in council meeting or what we say behind closed doors either. We have had one-on-one conversations with each other and with other members of the administration, but also trying to put some action to that. And just to say one more thing on that. I am vaccinated. My family's vaccinated. My daughter's gonna be vaccinated. She's only nine years old. I am completely for vaccines. But we are a governing, a governing body. And we have to make reasonable accommodations in situations like this, both for medical and religious exemptions. And I stress that because I know there are some that have some hesitancy with regard to religious exemptions as if they will be given willy nilly or unjustly. I am a pastor of a church. I have been approached on two occasions to write exemptions, and I've not written either one of them because it did not apply. I know them. I had a conversation with them. And it would not have been appropriate for me to write those exemptions. I don't think I'm an outlier. I think clergy will take it seriously. Will make those decisions based upon their faith, the teachings of their particular faith, as well as their understanding of the individual who is a member of their faith community. And so those religious exemptions should be afforded the same weight and value as medical exemptions. And then we should have some reasonable accommodations in place as well. All right, Mr. Krakowiac. So thank you, Council President, for answering so many of those questions. There are a couple that were missed that I caught, and I'm sure I didn't catch them all, but he, Mr. Krakowiac asked, why is Town Hall still closed? He asked how many of the two seventy five families have found housing? With regard to your question about posting the lawsuit to the website, I don't have a problem with it as long as our legal team thinks that's okay. It's it's just a letter. It's, I don't think there's a problem there, but if there is, legal will let us know. And he also asked about the five K cap. So I, that's on the agenda tonight. So I, I, I hope and expect that the appropriate administrative authorities can respond to Ms. Malanga and her request for an independent investigation. So what we are doing is engaging with the proper professionals to figure out what happened, how we got to this place, and what, if anything, needs to be done going forward to make sure that we're okay. If, when those reports come back, they point to any wrongdoing, any negligence, any willful wrongdoing, meaning we can look at the report as it is written versus what has happened in the past with regard to zoning and planning. If we can identify something that doesn't add up, then then we would, I would certainly be supportive of an investigation to figure out how we got to that place. There are still single-family homes there that are also on that ridgeline. We have other steep slopes. And I am fully supportive still in calling for a moratorium on all building, even though it may have already been approved on these steep slopes. I don't know what the legal position is. I don't know how Mr. Trink or Mr. Kizer would feel about that and what our legal standing would be. But if we have any legal basis at all to halt all development or building on steep slopes until we understand how these steep slopes can be affected by the increased severity of the storms and also by the actual building itself. Now that we've had such a tragic situation on Northfield Avenue, I think it is our responsibility to make sure that we are being proactive about protecting residents and other commercial dwellings in town. I want to end with Ms. Bracy, so I will jump to Mr. Puglisi. Thank you again for your timely information. I wanted to personally thank the County of Essex for putting on such a fantastic Halloween program. I brought my daughters there. We had a blast. Everybody, it was fully packed. I mean, it was just a wonderful, wonderful way to spend Halloween. And so, you know, my daughter now is expecting that to be our holiday tradition. To Ms. Bracy. You know, as Council President said, we received the letter when you did. You know, there are, this is a difficult. This is a very difficult situation for everyone involved. On the one hand, I believe the township has gone above and beyond the call of duty with regard to housing folks in in a very short fashion to make sure that they had comfortable accommodations and weren't sleeping on a hard gym floor. Or having to find, you know, shelter at a county facility of some sort. And so, and and I applaud the the entire community, every aspect of the community that has come out to be helpful to these residents in their time of need. This is what West Orange is really about. And I think our administration, along with the rest of the town, has shown that. On the other hand, there have been several missteps made. The way we've communicated about these things can certainly be improved. And we've had several conversations about that amongst the council as well as with the administration. So I don't know how we're going to move beyond the December four deadline. I don't know what December five will hold. What I want you to know is that your council and the administration are in talks about it. I don't know what the solution is. You know, money is a factor in this for sure. And because the because the township has decided to take on this role, which is really it should at the very least be shared, in my opinion, and I don't speak for anyone else but myself. It should be at least shared by the landlord, if not completely borne by the landlord. And I know that there are some legal protections that the landlord has and may allow him or her to not have to provide these supports. Not have to provide these supports, but you know, the right thing is the right thing. And so, you know, I don't know what December 5 will hold, but we've got a few weeks before that and we're going to do everything we can to make sure every single resident is. Taken good care of, has somewhere safe and warm to stay. And is as comfortable through this tragedy as we can with the limited resources we have. So yeah, that's my, my thinking on that. And I have spoken with Ms. Bracy as well as the ones that have been assigned to me. And I'm looking forward to continuing to work together. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you so very much, Councilmember Rutherford. Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Council President. As always, thank you to the public for your commentary and engaging in West Orange. Mr. Fagan, thank you so much as always for your informative historical perspective. We truly appreciate that. Mr. Puglisi, thank you so much for keeping us abreast of the county upcoming events. And especially informational updates on COVID. Wanted to let Mr. Dominguez know that we truly appreciate him coming on this evening and making us aware. His position and those of his membership. It is our desire that we come to an amicable agreement. It is very difficult for anyone to, to be without income. But again, as you iterated, especially during this time, so it is my desire that the administration. And our workers can find some type of common ground. Ms. Malanga, thank you so much. Again, with the situation that we're in right now. Speaks volumes as to your advocacy and those of the Air Green West Orange organization. However, everything comes with a price tag and prioritization. And not to say that any of the recommendations that you have made are not recommendations that we should implement. I think the most critical component of what you're suggesting is how do we finance those items? And how do we prioritize what is most important to our West Orange residents and community? So certainly we'll look at all of your recommendations. I think it is. Speculative at best for us to start placing blame on anything that could have led. To the 275 landslide. I think we should wait for official reports. Before we start suggesting that the township of West Orange or Seton Hall. Have done anything that could have led to, to this tragedy. But once those reports indeed are available, then we certainly can make an assessment. But I think, I, I think I would be much more conservative and prefer that we not make accusations. And certainly not make accusations that are unfounded without any proof or documentation other than our speculative assumptions. Mr. Prokoviac, thank you as always. I am always a little timid. In responding to some of your requests. And what I have observed over the last few weeks. Is that many of the questions that you put forth during public comment are questions that you already. Because you have served in this capacity for several years, may or may, may have the answers too. I appreciate that you are posing those questions so that you can have those answers as well as provide information to the community. However, you know, a lot of times you're asking for what our opinion is or if we. Are willing to have a position on, on actions of the administration. And I, you know, am remiss that you know all too well, the administration and our function of government. Our, our actions are separate. And even if we as a council, you know, we can certainly advocate. But it is the administration's ultimate decision as, as to how we govern West Orange. Some of the other answers have already been addressed by my council colleagues. And then we have some additional comments from Mr. Gross and, and I will yield to his expertise. Charity, you know that personally I have. My heart goes out to you as well as all the residents and I have had conversations with you. It is my desire to help every one of the residents there. But again, this is just an unfortunate unforeseen event. I, I will agree with some of my council colleagues that the township of West Orange has gone, gone above and beyond. What could have been required or should have been required or even asked of a municipality. I, I think that speaks volumes to what we are as a community. But we know that again, as I just stated, that resources are limited. And while it is not the intention of the mayor or this council to turn our backs. On any of the residents at 275 Northfield Avenue. Again, we will continue to advocate, see if we can secure additional resources independently and collectively. But do know that it is, it is not us turning our back on you. It is just that resources are not indefinite. I think that is addressing all of the public comment. Again, looking forward and would like to salute those who have served. For on Veterans Day, I will not be able to attend a public ceremony. But my heart will certainly be there in spirit. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. And I, I do just want to say for the record. Because I have been asked if the council has received a copy of the report. But I will say that the council and the township did not receive a report. We received a letter from Langin. I'm sorry if I'm not saying that name right. And I just wanted to read you a paragraph from here. Because it's really only, and I'm sorry for the noise in the background. My husband has headsets on and he doesn't realize he's loud. So it says, please understand that Langin has not been retained by any party to investigate the cause of the failure. Or to develop a stabilization remediation report. Nonetheless, as a professional engineering firm, we have a professional ethical and moral obligation to protect the safety, health, property and welfare of the public. As such, we are providing this notice. So this was the notice that the township received and acted upon. When they evacuated the residents. So there, there is no report to be had. But I am hopeful that, you know, we do have the opportunity sooner than later to be able to. Move in that direction, whether the township retains geotechnical engineers and/or the state helps. In that area, but I'm certainly going to be asking the state or all of our elected officials who represent us in the 10th and the 11th. And our assembly members as well as Senator Cody. So I certainly look forward to that, but to answer just generally in public, no, the council has not received the report because there has not been one written. As I just read from the letter that notified us to evacuate the resident at 275. And one thing I do want to say, Ms. Malanga, I, I, I'm sure I did not answer this because I thought about it afterwards. But I have and will continue to advocate for the purchase now more than ever of the Solvaker Forest. Think it's very important to do so from concern. Again, not an expert in, by any stretch of the imagination. In, in those areas of engineering or sciences. But do realize where we are with climate crisis and would like to join that call with Councilman Rutherford. To, if we're able to legally to put a moratorium on any development that is slated for. You know, development by a ridge or by a slope. So if we can legally do that, I think that we'd all be supportive of that. So looking forward to having that discussion with our legal team. And as Councilwoman McCartney said, it's something that she's working on. And I know Mr. Trank, our township attorney, did say during the last council meeting. That he would be working on preparing an amendment to that ordinance. So look forward to that as well. At this time. Madam Clerk, we can move to the consent agenda. And we can finish the discussion with respect to next steps. Or if there's, you know, we'll, we'll have that discussion about 275 under new business. I just want to get through the agenda. Madam Clerk.
Okay, approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting minutes of October 26, 2021. Report of Township Officers Nun, reading of petitions and communications in bids. Planning Board Resolution recommending that Block 116, Lot 44, 239-245 Main Street. Be designated as a condemnation area in need of redevelopment pursuant to NJSA 40A. Calling 12A-5B of the local redevelopment and housing law. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
I do. It's just a follow-up of, of last meeting that we had with respect to our forester. Just if, if Mr. Lepore is on, he can let us know. The last time he was on, he did advise council that he was going to consider. Having one forester as opposed to the two consultants that we currently have. I'm not sure if Mr. Lepore is still on. Mr. Lepore, just the status.
Council President, if I can just like, just bring council up to speed without going into detail. As of this past Monday, we are down, we, we, we only have one forester and moving forward. And we, as we enter into next year.
Okay, then I don't have any questions on the, on the bill list. Thank you, Mr. Gross.
Resolutions, Council President, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Sorry, do we consent on the bills? I just want to make sure that we all consented on the bills. Okay, I'm, yes, okay.
Council President, on the resolutions, I don't have any, any, I'm not pulling any. But I do want to congratulate Paula Reynolds. Qualified purchasing agent, resolution 280-21.
Thank you. Did any of my council colleagues have any resolutions they wanted pulled? I'm sure that there are some questions. Councilman Rutherford, I just saw you unmute.
Yes, I, I don't want to pull to vote no, but I do have questions on 277 and 278.
Okay, we, we can have that, those questions now, please.
So. All of these change orders, and I'm sure, do you want to go through the rest of the council colleagues first or do you want me to just jump into this?
No, that's okay. Well, I'm sure some other of our colleagues had the same questions that you're going to pose.
I'm curious as to why, I, I understand the logic from a financial standpoint with regard to why we are. Making the change orders and adding additional streets for street improvements. I, I know that it is more cost-effective because the contractors are already there and all of that. I, I get it. What I'm concerned about is that we aren't planning properly from the beginning. And I'm not trying to be disparaging to anyone, but I do want to understand why isn't that, it that we use the one-touch rule? If we're going to do all of these streets and they're adjacent, they're in the same neighborhood, why not incorporate all of them into the initial. RFP or RFQ that we send out and have people competitively bid on the entire project. Versus awarding a smaller piece and then having what I believe now is three change orders. And up to about a 35% higher cost for the same, I mean, for that project. And, and maybe perhaps Mr. Lepore can answer that.
Yeah, first off, I want to be clear about these particular resolutions. These are streets that, quite frankly, took a beating during the, the hurricane. And because of that, we weren't anticipated at the point in time. So we were able to, we, we, these are actually being done on emergency as emergencies. And authorizes emergencies because of the conditions after the hurricane. What, what we did is that we, we, I'll say we piggyback because these aren't technically necessarily a change order. Much as we're piggybacking on the, the, the bid prices that we obtained. So we know that they're good pricing and, and then that's very rare that we get that in emergency circumstances. Usually emergency circumstance, you take whatever you can get because you've got to, you've, you've got to get the work done immediately. Mr. Lepore, to his credit, was able to do both. To get us, to, to get the work done immediately based on the, the emergency that existed. As well as negotiate the proper pricing for it. So that, that is the, those particular resolutions. The history behind them. Other, otherwise in general, oftentimes when you go out to bid. You, you, you don't, you know, we, you, you don't want to design, over-design. So you often, often you'll, you'll, we'll end up. When we get our bids back, if we get, if we get good bids back, we, we have money left over. More than, than what we anticipated. So then we'll, we'll add on to that after the fact. Because, because again, once we go through the process and, and we get the streets done. And there were no change orders or there were limited change orders based on the actual conditions. We have funds available and rather than make taxpayers wait another year or another, another session till we put enough funds together. To get the same kind of good bids, we, 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 we take advantage of that when we can. So I, I understand the frustrations that it, that it looks like, but in, in the long run, it, 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 it is, it saves taxpayer money. And it gets jobs done quicker. And, you know, I, I appreciate your comments about quote-unquote better planning. But the, the truth of the matter is, you know, we, if we, if, if we overestimated and couldn't do streets. That we were anticipated, some might say that wasn't good planning. So I, I, I respect the, the, your, your, your point of view on it. But I tell you, in real life, it's just usually just not quite that clean. So that's kind of.
I hear you and I, and that's a satisfactory answer. I, I think 34.6% is quite a bit above the original bid. So, you know, there, there's some room between your answer and my question with regard to the planning process. I do have another question for you. Is Columbia Street currently scheduled? Is that, because I didn't see Columbia in any of these and I know it's not adjacent to any of these streets. But I know that they had some damage due to the storm as well. I know we've done some work down there and there's still some left. Is that on the current schedule?
I, I, I will, I will defer to Mr. Lepore on that.
Councilman Rutherford, yes, it is on the schedule. It's going to be part of Watchung Avenue. The City of Orange paved some additional section of Watchung Avenue that into West Orange that I thought we would originally need to do. So I have the ability now, certainly I think within the, the budget of the project. To continue up to that block of Columbia Street from Watchung Avenue to, to the bend by the former Tobias Bakery.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lepore.
And, and, and Councilman, I couldn't agree with you more that the 34% is an unusual. And if, and if that is really because that, that was initiated by the emergency, by the conditions. So, and while we were on the road. Dealing with the emergency, it just seemed to make sense to do a complete job and get it done right and do it once. So I, I would, Mr. Lepore will tell you that, that when I see change orders that start to reach high percentage numbers. And to me, a high percentage number is anything in the teens. I'm very skittish about that and, and, you know, concerned about that. And so we, we, and make sure that, that we're on the right track when we, when, when it does happen. This particular one, you're absolutely right, is a very unusual one. So.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford. I did just want to add to this conversation since we're talking about streets. Some residents have reached out inquiring about where they are on the list and. And I will be sharing that Edgewood Avenue from Arvine Road to Rock Spring Road will be done very shortly. Thank you, Mr. Lepore, for responding so detailed. And you actually did answer my question and went above and provided some additional information. So I will also share that the rest of Edgewood Avenue, known as North Edgewood Avenue, is on next year's improvement list, as are Elf Road, Kingwood Road, and Nymph Road. Cornell Street or St. Cloud Avenue for improvements are on the list for next year. And there are a couple of other ones, but I know that the families in the St. Cloud area were questioning if they were on the list. So I'm happy to see that they are, and I will share that with them at that time. Thank you. I know, Mr. Lepore, you are, you do so many and wear so many different hats and do so much. I feel guilty emailing you, but I just wanted to say thank you for your response. The last question with respect to these resolutions, Mr. Gross. We are applying for FEMA on the emergency road repairs?
To the extent possible, yes, we will be.
All right, good. Happy to hear that. And then, on resolution two eighty-one, for the benefit of the public, Mr. Gross, this is a resolution to upgrade the eight hundred megahertz radio communication equipment, the second phase. I want you to just share with the public where we started as far as the quotes were and where we are and just how vital this equipment is to our first responders, please.
Okay, yeah, this is a replacement of our existing and antiquated communication system. It is, I won't say it's overdue, but it's right on time. We've been working on it, quite frankly, for five years. When we started off working on it just to do an in-kind transfer into new, the project was pricing out about three and a half million dollars in total. We took a really hard look at it and looked at our ability to reprogram or look at the technology of where we are now as opposed to traditional technology. And we were able to trim that three and a half million down to a little less than one point nine million over two years. So it's really a tribute to the staff and that really worked hard to come up with innovative ways to do government in a more economical way and maintain the security necessary without giving up anything on what our needs were. So it's, a big applause goes out to everybody involved in this project. And this is, this is, as you recall, last year, the council allocated a million dollars to the project. Almost nine hundred thousand to the project. And this, once this is done, we won't be back to you on this for at least five to ten years. So.
I am happy to hear that, particularly since I've already shared with, with most of you that my daughter had to be rescued from an elevator very recently. And our fire personnel had to use cell phones. They couldn't use their radios in there because they just could not communicate. So thank you for all of the work on this. I know that this is a welcome relief to all of us. Councilwoman Williams, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Council President. My question was regarding the previous resolution and the street repairs. Just wanted to ask, Mr. Lepore, do we have on our website a list of the upcoming repairs, street repairs? I know I've seen that somewhere, but I'm not certain if it's on the town website.
Other than maybe what gets posted with any bond or finance ordinance, I do not have a list. But I will fine-tune that and work with our IT department to put that up on our website.
Thank you so very much. That would be extremely helpful.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Also, well, can you, I know that Councilman, I'm sorry, no, this is two eight, no, it's two-two. Was that, were those all the questions you had, Councilman Rutherford? Anyone else have any other questions? The judge provider, can you talk to resolution two eighty-two with respect to the HVACs? Mr. Gross? Or is this a Mr. Lepore question?
Yeah, that, Mr. Lepore certainly can chime in on it. I'll give you the, you know, the high, look at Town Hall. We replaced our roof lately, recently. And during that process, we discovered that the conditions that we thought existed with our existing HVAC was not good. And so there, we needed to move forward and replace those units. These are done under state contracts and co-op in order to save town some money and act quickly. Done before the season, before we get into the cold season. Mr. Lepore, if you need to add anything else, please feel free.
No, just echoing what you said, we go through a national cooperative and that helps us keep the prices low as well as avoid some of the costs of bidding and designing. And we're gonna also then save money as this is much more efficient equipment.
Wonderful to hear. Okay. And then on two eighty-seven, I guess I'm gonna ask Councilwoman McCartney, since she's on the planning board. I know that you briefly touched upon the planning board's recommendation and only one property within the study area, which is the future auto body repair. Can you speak to that, Councilwoman, please? It's resolution two eighty-seven.
Council President, before she does, just before she does speak, if there's a need, I can get Mr. Beckelman on the phone or he can come into the meeting as a, you know, as a participator. We didn't think there'd be a question about this, frankly, but if there is one and it requires his input, we can get it.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if it does require his input. I trust that as our counsel, as our liaison to the planning board, Councilwoman McCartney can just share. If not, if you're more comfortable, we'll pull it to discuss and get Mr. Beckelman on the phone. Let's do that. So let's pull two eighty-seven. I'm not pulling it to vote against it, but Mr. Kizer, thank you for the offer. If you can get Mr. Beckelman on the.
I think that Susan was trying to respond, but she is muted, so.
I.
Councilwoman. Yes, but I was trying to find my notes and I put them with my council liaison notes, which disappeared in this file here.
Know what that's like.
Really? They disappear. So the plan was to recommend to the planning board, the recommendation was made for a study to be done. Our rule did a study to extend our redevelopment zone. And there was only one property actually that met the criteria to be an area in need of redevelopment. And that was the future auto body shop because it had been vacant for over two years now. So I don't, is that, is that the question?
Yeah, that was it. It was just the only one that was able, that qualified. And it's because of the fact that it's been abandoned for, for as long as I can recall. Do we know if there is any remediation that has to occur? Are we gonna do something?
That was one of the questions that was asked. We don't know that at that part, that was not part of the study. It really was to determine if it was an area need redevelopment. And out of the whole extension, that was the only property that was, that fit the criteria. All the rest, there really are viable businesses there. And we also heard the, we also heard the application for Sherwin-Williams in the CVS Plaza recently, for their sign there and for Family Dollar, taking over the other spot in that CVS location. So there really wasn't anything else that would meet that criteria to be designated as an area need redevelopment.
Understood. Thank you very much, Councilwoman. And Councilman, I saw your hand up and then it went down.
Well, my, my question is on the zone. It's really not on the agenda tonight. But since we're talking about it, there's a fencing company on the corner of Columbia and Watchung, which is directly adjacent to the development area. Is it too late to incorporate that space or additional spaces into the zone?
That already is part of our redevelopment zone? You mean across the street from, across the street from Department of Public Works?
Yes. I think it ends on the same side of the street as Public Works and does not extend to the other side of the street. I could be wrong, but I think it is only on the same side of the street as a Public Works animal shelter, those properties.
I don't have that map in front of me. That was not part of what we were discussing at the planning board.
Yeah, and so this is probably not the right forum for it, but it was on my mind. I wanted to bring it up. I will reach out to Councilwoman McCartney to discuss.
Yeah, I can certainly find that map and show you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Okay, so any of my other council colleagues have any other questions on any of the resolutions before we approve the consent agenda? Seeing none?
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Ordinances on first reading, twenty-six sixty-four twenty-one, and ordinance of the Township of West Orange, providing for a special emergency appropriation in an amount not to exceed five hundred thousand to fund contractually required severance liabilities resulting from the retirement of employees in the township. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
A mo.
Second.
Okay, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Mathieu Brown?
Yes. I think, Councilman Rutherford, did you have a question or did you get your question answered on this?
Yeah, my, my question was answered on this. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Oh, I have a question.
I'm sorry. Councilwoman Castellino, I didn't see your hand. Go ahead.
Yeah, I guess it's for Mr. Gross. Or any of these recent retirements due to the newly implemented mandate?
There may, there may be one that's coming up, but not in this particular calculation. But there, so the answer is no, but if your, if your question really is whether the mandates triggered any retirements, the answer is. It did.
It did.
Yes.
How many?
Two.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, for that question. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance twenty-six sixty-five dash twenty-one, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter Seven, Traffic Subsection seven dash thirty-two point two, Restricted Parking Zones of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, Handicap Parking, One Sixty South Valley Road, Thirty-four Park Terrace, Forty-eight Liberty Street. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
A mo.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Mathieu Brown?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance twenty-six sixty-six dash twenty-one, and ordinance amending Chapter Twenty-five, Section forty point two of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, permits. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Second.
Okay. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Mathieu Brown?
Yes. And I actually did have a question on this. Mr. Gross or Mr. Lepore, who is best suited to answer the change of the fees? What triggered this? Was it a review? Was it?
We actually had a, a particular situation where there was a simple transfer of, of a property, of a business. And the, the, the actual cost that calculated out based on square footage was somewhere in the area of twelve thousand dollars. Yet the amount of time it took for us to do the inspection was nowhere near that. And since the fees really are not supposed to be, for lack of a better term, usurious, we took a look at that and we said that, you know, and we did, we actually then polled other communities to see what, what they do and how they handled it. And, and we determined that this was a, a more equitable solution for that, that particular situation.
Happy to hear. Thank you. Did any of my council colleagues have any questions on this?
I would just ask that you share this information with our neighbor municipalities because these numbers are so inconsistent from township to township. So thank you, West Orange.
Madam Clerk?
Okay, pending matters, new matters, council discussion.
So this is the time where the council, for the benefit of the public, this is the time where the council can bring up new matters. We are not acting on anything that we discuss. It's just the time that we are here together in open session and indulge one another with anything that we need to discuss. I know earlier, Councilwoman Castellino, go ahead, your hands up.
Yeah. This is a new, a new matter. A question for Mr. Gross. When is the garbage contract up and the recycling? Is that this coming year or how much time do we have before we have to start putting, getting that bid prepared? Because it is a very lengthy bid and we had a committee last time and I wanted to be involved again.
I believe it's two years.
I believe, I believe that's correct also.
Okay, so we have a lot of time. Okay. No, no, yeah, we need like a year in advance to start preparing. So that's why I was just wanting to see where we were at. Because last time we lined up the school contracts with our contracts. And unfortunately, that didn't pan out well, but you know, that doesn't mean it couldn't pan out well this time around. So, but next, when I have a, when I have a liaison meeting with the school board, I will, that's gonna be on one of my agenda items to see where they're at and whatnot. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to touch base on that.
Councilwoman Castellino, I am happy that you brought that up because I wanted to say, and please indulge me in a point of personal privilege, can you say that louder so the people in the back can hear you? It takes a year for a no-bid contract, really? I say that in jest.
Year hours in meetings? And the bid is this, is this?
Yeah, I, I, I'm not gonna say the mistake or misfortune, but I did ask Mr. Gross because I wanted to start going through it. And he said, it's going, it's a lot. And oh my God, you're saying this big. It was like this. I'm still going through it.
And by the way, this, for lack of a better term, no-bid contract has to be approved by the state in this. So it's not, you know, there is a whole prerequisite that comes down from the state that tells us how to do it. So it's not, it is not something that we make out of whole cloth here.
Yeah.
I mean, I've been on the committee with respect to that, that bid, I think now, two or three times. And, and the problem is that the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, you know, has all kinds of regulations and strict rules about how it's bid and, and what goes into the, the prospectus. It's, it's a lot of effort and it takes a lot of meetings over a period of about a year. So. But fortunately, we don't have to do it yet, but we'll be starting in another year and hopefully I'm not around at that point.
Oh, you're not allowed to retire.
Yeah, you're not allowed to retire. And I appreciate, Mr. Kizer, you sharing that as well because I just, I, I, I don't like that there is so much misinformation that upsets our residents. Because they read a post from someone who may have been elected before and, you know, it's gospel when it's not. The fact of the matter is, it is bid and it is tremendous process. So thank you for even bringing that up, Councilwoman Castellino.
Sure. And whenever you're ready, I'll talk about the, the study that the downtown did, but whenever you're ready, I'm here.
Okay, Councilman Rutherford, you, you had your hand up as well.
I have something very simple. It will not take long at all to get is Rosary Morelli's ninetieth birthday.
Yes. Wow, happy birthday, Rosary Morelli.
Very happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Yes, absolutely. Um, and I also share at this point, um, and, and we'll, we'll come back to, um, to your, um, new business item as well, Councilwoman, um, Castellino. But I wanted to, for us to have a discussion on your thoughts. And again, nothing that we say or do, and this is for the public to understand that we're not taking actions, we're not making promises. These are just, you know, this is the one time because we're in a public forum that we're able to be all together as elected officials to have discussions. And this is, this is the time that we do it. So with respect to the residents on two seventy-five Northfield Avenue, Mr. Gross, um, I know I mentioned earlier because I saw the invoice from the Clarion. Um, but can you give us, um, I, and it's only for perspectives because I'm not sure if my council colleagues are aware. Um, to date, what has the, what has, what have we expended in, um, hotel costs?
I, I, I'd be happy to share that with you, but before I do, you know, I, I just want to say on behalf of the administration. You know, this, this is, this has been in, 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 in both, um, in a, a, a very, very sad situation, uh, that, that, you know, that we find ourselves in with, from the very beginning until we get people in, into, um, a, a, a more permanent situation. It's something that, that the township has worked very hard and as was mentioned earlier that our staff has spent, you know, twenty-four, seven assigned to doing this, to the point where other work is just not being done.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and at the same time, it really is an example of, of a, a, a great, great response. A response that just frankly, um, does not happen elsewhere. Uh, you know, and, and I'm not gonna go into it, but other than to say, you know, I, I do think that our staff generally feels that they've, that they've provided a great service to all the, the residents. And while at the same time, we understand that, 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 that they may not feel that way or they may not see the same things that we see. And, and that's to be expected because the difference is in perspective. So, uh, I just want to assure them that, that, you know, no matter what the financial circumstances of this may be, um, the, the, the township of West Orange is going to continue to work with them, be the, be the conduit between them and other agencies. And frankly, on our own, go out and look for additional financial resources to make sure that if, if we can find them so that we can continue to assist them. Um, and we said that one of the problems that there, that we've, we've experienced is it's, it, the, the, the length of time that it's taken to find homes has prolonged what we anticipated the cost would be. Uh, our costs have run between eight, between six and eight thousand dollars a day. Um, that's a lot of money. And I can tell you to date, to date, we've spent over two hundred thousand dollars, uh, on, and, and if, if, I, I don't know, don't know what the next month is going to, to bring to us, but it could be as much as another two hundred thousand dollars. So this is, this is not, um, a, a, a small endeavor that the township has taken on. It's been, and, and when you, and you can't equate the dollars to, to the effect. And it's not about that, but it is about what we have to, in order to, to, to dedicate to it and, and what we can find. So, um, certainly appreciate everybody's position in this and, and can only hope that, uh, the residents can see their way to at least understand, um, our position and our desire to, to, to do our best to continue to help them no matter what until they find more permanent circumstances.
Mr. Gross, to that, I just want to say, I think that none of us here, um, questioned the commitment because we've seen it from the very beginning. There was no hesitation to, um, you know, do anything other than find a, a, accommodations, right? As opposed to sometimes in areas of disaster, that's, that's not something that's provided by the townships or municipalities where people suffer loss, um, of homes and shelter. Um, so I, I want to say that first and foremost. And secondly, um, working very closely with Mr. Trank, um, the administration in this space, I have seen firsthand the, the amount of compassion, the level of stress, the, the, the personal time that's taken to call developers everywhere. Um, I've been on the calls with Mr. Trank, um, talking to, to, um, building owners trying to get, um, apartments. So I know that it's not, um, you know, failure on, on the administration's part to, to care because it, it certainly has demonstrated that they care. My, my next question to you is going to be just because I want to keep a clear record, a clear public record. The two hundred thousand dollars that we have expended thus far, is that all from the, um, Mayor's Sunshine Fund? And, um, additional donations or are we looking at other resources?
Now, uh, the, 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 uh, uh, Mayor's Sunshine Fund was exhausted very early in this process.
Oh, wow. Okay.
And so this is, these are funds, we will, we will be coming to you probably at the next meeting, uh, with the, uh, emergency appropriation for the hurricane. Um, and we're hoping that maybe we'll, we'll be able to, to, uh, recoup some of the, some of the funds, uh, if possible. We won't know that from FEMA for quite a while. It's not something that, that we're going to know. And, but we, we certainly are going to apply, just as we, you know, as was said earlier, um, whether we were going to apply for some of the road damage that was, that was done, the mitigation of the road damage. Well, again, we're going to try every avenue to try to, uh, protect the interest of the taxpayers and the interests of, of our, of our residents same time. So, um, but the, 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 these, you know, the, the funds so far above and beyond the, uh, uh, Mayor Sunshine Fund as well as the funds between now and the next month or so. Um, they're all coming, um, from the township's bottom, bottom line.
So our operating expan, our operating budget?
Out of, out of surplus. I mean, you'll have, we'll be, we'll about to be doing emergency appropriations. We'll have to raise that money. We'll have to borrow it, um, perhaps. And, you know, in order to, to, um, you know, and, and the year on an even basis. Um, so it's, um, unfortunate.
It is. Councilwoman Castellino?
How, um, you know, this time last year, we were, you know, hoping all our tax collection, uh, was coming in, how, where we look this year that, uh, compared to this time last year? Are we back to our normal collection rates?
Better, but not perfect. You know, it, you know, and that's not just tax wise. That's, uh, across the board with our revenues. You know, we're, we're doing better, but not perfect.
And, and, and my, my hand was raised earlier because of, you answered the FEMA question. What's your thoughts on collecting from them? And at this time, you, you, you don't have an answer. It sounds like.
Uh, first, um, we're still collecting for, for, you know, emergencies from five, five and six.
Yeah.
So we just, it's just, it's the nature of the beast, uh, that you apply. And you find out later on whether they, you know, what they're gonna give and how much they're gonna give. So.
Maybe, maybe we could do council president, I'll, I'll talk with Ms. Brolin, Mr. Fagin. And Perry Bashkoff will have to ramp up the Mayor Sunshine Fund again.
Exactly.
Get, get word out and, you know, try to, as always, reach out to our residents to, you know, see what we could do to help our, our, our residents in need. I know everybody's been very generous, but we'll continue to, uh, to reach out.
Absolutely. Um, for the benefit of the public and some of our newer council colleagues, um, Mr. Gross, when we're talking about our budget, you know, we budget, um, so that we can also have a surplus, obviously. But, um, when we're looking at tax increases, so say, to, and this is, and again, just hypothetical, I don't want anyone to say council president said they're raising our taxes. That's not what council president is saying. It's just a question with respect to, um, hypothetically, if we, if we don't recoup the two hundred thousand and possibly, you know, four hundred thousand, um, what, what implications, um, can you share with the public what that means when we're looking at one point, half a point of an increase in taxes? What does that, does that look like?
Well, just to, just put some perspective on it, every six hundred thousand is one percent.
Okay. And, and I want, I want to share that because I, 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 I hope that everyone understands the compassion um, and the dedication and the commitment that we have to our residents. Um, but as, not but, um, as elected officials, we have a fiduciary responsibility townwide. And we have to consider, uh, where we are headed, um, and what those possibilities look like. So I, I just wanted to ask that so that we all understand what that means. If we're going to come to the administration and say, well, we want you to continue to pay. And then when budget season comes and you are asked to, um, vote for an increase, what, what that means to all of us here. Just putting things out there, food for thought. Um, I'm not asking for a resolution tonight, but I know we were taken aback a little bit, um, by the letters that we received. Um, a little disappointed, but we have to understand that fiscally, you know, we have a fiduciary responsibility to consider all of these things. So, um, I say that to say, hopefully we can come up with some creative ways, like Councilwoman Castellino mentioned, to ramp up, um, funds. I know Channel Two News Today put on the, on the, um, on their website. And I'll ask them to add the Mayor Sunshine Flood Fund to their website, but they put on the, um, GoFundMe that Jonathan Redwine, um, had, had started. So there we've just been buying gift cards for food. Um, but I think we'll ask them to also include the Mayor Sunshine Fund there as well. So that, you know, any, and every little bit helps. Councilman, uh, Rutherford?
Uh, yes. Uh, thank you, Council. I, I think, um, just kind of circling back to this compassion. I, I know, um, not just, um, Ms. Bracy, but other residents have, uh, expressed, um, that they feel like as a result of that letter, that we may be, uh, abandoning them or leaving them to their own devices. And I know that we're not, but it feels like that to them. And it really doesn't matter what the reality is on this side of the table because it feels that way to them. So, you know, I think this is a great usage of emergency fund. Now, I know at least as far, I mean, surplus funds, I think, um, our surplus is multiple millions of dollars. I don't have the figure in my head, so I don't want to say a number. Um, but I certainly think two hundred thousand dollars or so out of that was well spent, uh, given the magnitude of this tragedy. And I'm happy to have a conversation with the administration and my council colleagues about how much of that is appropriate, uh, to apply to this particular project. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And that's, that's really why I wanted us all to have this conversation, to be able to look at everything that's before us. Right? Because we're all concerned, um, deeply concerned about, you know, the uncertainty for these families.
And, and if I could just add, you know, I, 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 I understand and, 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 and know in everything that, that Councilman Rutherford just said, is, you know, to, to the, the residents of, of, that the affected residents, you know, that this, this looks like a very short time. But the reality is, before we did this, you know, we, we, we really didn't even know how many, how much, how many days, you know, we, we ran out of money in the, in the, in the, in the fund. And we didn't know how long we were going to be able to do it. We felt compelled to at least give them some level of stability. And we, it was one of the complaints that we had, had received from some of the residents is that we weren't able to give them a firm timetable. Uh, a, a, and so we felt that compelled to do that to, to say, okay, we're, this is now out thirty days. That, that, or so, the, that also does to, another, something else. It gives us thirty days to figure out, what do we do for maybe, maybe in that thirty days? Maybe, maybe some, you know, a good number of people find places and some don't. And then it gives us an opportunity to, to try to figure out how to help those that don't, you know, a, after that. Do, you know, how do we find additional funds? Maybe there's other agencies. It gave us the ability to say, okay, we now have a timeframe to get this done in. Um, so I, it, 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 it is, um, I know it was, it was, it was not, um, the optimum way to proceed, but it was a way we needed to proceed.
Uh, unfortunately. Mr. Gross, can I, can I just say something to that? I, I, I don't want to misspeak and I don't want anyone to misunderstand what I'm saying. I believe, um, you know, I don't agree with Mr. Gross or, or mayor on many things in town. It's, it's no secret. It's not a big deal either. That's how governance works, right? But on this, it is clear that the mayor and administration's heart is in the right place, uh, that we're trying to do the right thing for people that are, have been tragically uprooted, um, on a moment's notice. And so, you know, I think the hearts on both sides of the table, the administration and the council are all in the right place. And I, and I also understand the need to have, uh, some sort of a deadline to encourage folks to, on our side of the table as well as yours, uh, to work a little bit harder to find a solution because we can't go on like this forever. Um, but the, the only thing I would encourage is that we have, um, more communication around those decisions, both with council and the residents, uh, as we approach making those decisions so that, uh, they don't feel like we are thrusting things on them, uh, without any advance notice or without any kind of feedback from them. And, um, but please don't misunderstand or, or, uh, my comments. I think the mayor has, has, has the, the right intentions and the best interest of these residents as well as the administration and the council, uh, and trying to help out. And so, so I, 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 I'm sorry for cutting you off, but I wanted to make sure that that point was clear.
It, it's really appreciated, Councilman. Okay, do any of my, okay, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yeah, I, I, I just, you just muted. Oh, sorry. So just to Councilman Rutherford's point, um, you know, I believe that letter is dated today's November ninth. The, the letter is dated December fourth. It's about a month away. So we, we, it's not like, you know, I, I know for the person panicking to, to find somewhere to go, it seems like a very short time period, but it, it, it is about a month. And again, um, you, you know, we're, we're all gonna keep working on this, keep reaching out to our contacts. See, you know, something comes available, um, believe it or not, one or two of my contacts I, you know, called didn't realize how many people were, were in need, but unfortunately they didn't have apartments available. So, um, we're, we're, we're gonna keep, we're gonna keep trying. But, you know, the administration, it is a month away, but for that person, that is a month away comes up quick. But, so, tough, tough situation. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. And while, while your hand is still up, I'm gonna circle back to, circle back to you. No, no, that's okay. I wanted to circle back to, um, you had a, another matter you wanted to talk about.
Yeah, so with the downtown alliance, um, I, I wasn't the liaison at the, at that point, but I had just come on the council, um, where the downtown alliance at that point in time, five years ago, um, had done a study. They engaged over four hundred residents, uh, with a, a community survey, uh, held many multiple stakeholders meetings on, um, what the community wanted to see within the downtown. Uh, had an economic development, um, open house for realtors. You know, it was a full-fledged, um, year-long process. And as I mentioned earlier, uh, back then, it was eighteen thousand dollars that the downtown was able to get ten of that paid for, uh, by resources with Main Street, New Jersey. I was on the phone with the grant writer this afternoon to see what could be available because maybe we could get funding for such another activity of that magnitude. And, um, right now there isn't anything out there. She's gonna be on alert. There is some infrastructure, uh, money from, you know, federal government coming, uh, soon down the pike. As we all heard this week on. Uh, money from, you know, federal government coming uh soon down the pike, as we all heard this week on the news, so. Um, you know, they're reading into that. And we'll we'll see, like I said, it's unfortunate, um we didn't qualify this year for the NPP. Grant because that would have helped us put us in that kind of situation. Um, you know, Trent and Atlantic City, a lot of the other those kind of communities um were awarded. Um, you know, from what I heard too, first time out, usually, you know, you have to apply a couple times, so hopefully next year, that may be an opportunity for us. But um I'll keep you all posted if any funding comes up for that kind of activity, because. You know, we're talking studies, uh and all these things are much needed for our community. Uh, st- you know, study of our, uh, you know, of our ridges, um. Downtowns, you know, open space, it, you know, we we have to figure all this out, a lot of important. Needs that we have to look forward to and. And prioritize. So I just want to let you know that that's something that magnitude was done. Um, I we believe at the downtown also, um. We're seeing what redevelopment brings. I know we did approve in the capital budget some funding that hopefully Mister Lepore. I know is working on and looking into um the Lando parking lot, because that is a detriment for our downtown. Uh, that is the lot that is uh um in Tory Corner. Uh, behind the community substation and the firehouse. Um, that desperately needs to be reconfigured, redesigned, um we're looking into that. Uh, because that is an economic driver there. Uh, parking, as we all know, is essential for successful downtowns. And a few of the businesses that have left us or have not done well. It was because one of the complaints and and that study from years ago, it was parking. Parking was a big detriment. So a lot of pedestrian safety that's going on now. Um, with the grant that we received this year, hopefully that will be utilized properly. And um. At the end, you know, again, we'll we'll have to wait to see what the new redevelopment plan's going to bring. And uh, but parking was on that list years ago. Uh, obviously restaurants, uh Trader Joe's was 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 on the list. Uh, so that's why an economic developer is important too. That's something else that we, I don't know, Mister. Gross, we started talking about last meeting. I don't know how much we have in the budget for that position, but I I. You know, we started discussing it last week. I think it's important that we, it starts becoming a reality. But.
Yeah, I will. I'll I'll jump into that point. Um, some I didn't, we didn't speak today, or was it yesterday? These days run upon me, um but I did forward my council colleagues the email that I shared with the mayor and the. Administration, both for the need for the charrette, as well as the economic developer, um that um. We have budgeted for and not hired. Um, I am happy to say that I did speak to the mayor yesterday and. Um, we're going to start actively pursuing that. Um, so it certainly is necessary for us to do that. And Mister Gross also had a good idea with respect to what a charrette, the 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 best use, Mister Mister Gross has had experience with charrettes. In South Orange when he was with that municipality. Can you just um share a little bit of what you shared with me and your thoughts, which I thought were a really good. Um, way to proceed.
Uh, yeah, well, just the the overview is that that. Um, wh- when looking at the downtown, a a comprehensive, a comprehensive look at that from. From end to end, if you will, you know, whether, you know, and uh however you define that. Uh, would make sense to to for for that. That scope to have, you know, certainly public input, uh as well as um, you know, effort to 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 find. To come up with a community position uh on 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 what should be in the downtown. And the charrettes might work well for that. Uh, so that's certainly something uh that that and and of course. Also working well for that is the uh Economic Development Coordinator position or or your that. That that in the budget. So some combination or or use of either one of those. Uh, certainly makes sense, I think, for the downtown.
Yeah, absolutely. We're talking about um about approximately twenty-one acres where we get to reimagine what that is. And by we, I mean um, community input, all of our considerations. You know, I I think that's really relevant, you know, I remember when Councilman, you were um campaigning and you did a video down there. You imagined the campus and, you know, Main Street is what Main Street is, but we can create our own Main Streets in, you know, twenty-one acres. So I'm happy to hear that. I hope that we can all be supportive of that charrette down in that area, because. It's a lot, it's a lot of space, so looking forward to that. Um, Councilwoman McCartney.
Uh, thank you, Council President. Thank you for sharing your letter with us. Um, I, the part I did not agree with in your letter was a part about the planner, because I don't believe that. What I what I do believe in this came out in our budget hearings last time. Um, I do agree with an economic developer, because I think that that. I think we're looking for the marketing survey that was done years ago with the downtown alliance. It showed. Um, the population, the wealth. Within a one-mile radius, five-mile radius, ten-mile radius, which a marketing person. Um, not the job of the planner, but a marketing person could u- utilize that information to recruit businesses to the area. Uh, that's my vision of someone, uh that economic position, that would be part of their. Scope of work to do. Um, I don't believe that that falls under the the planner to recruit that. Um, I think the idea of the charrette. Though I love community, I love brainstorming, and I love that community participation, we need someone to invest. In these ideas, so all the more reason why you would need an economic developer to look. At what the community is asking for. You know, just because we want something doesn't mean we can afford to have that. So the charrette, like I said, is a great brainstorming uh vehicle. Uh, but in an economic um. Marketing or developer. Position would be able to put that to good use, that information to good use.
So certainly to that point, uh the charrettes are typically um um. Performed or hosted, because they're hosted um over some period um with. Um, planning firms that have that. Access, if you will, to economic developing partners as well. So. It's more than just listening to a community forum the way we did um when we were acquiring Rock Spring Golf Course, for instance. This this has goals, this has um experience and expertise. Um, that have to do with planning and economic development, development. Um, and as far as economic developer is concerned, um I am hopeful, because one is, one can have the same. Skill set as a planner, but be an economic developer, so that that would be a bonus. Um, and is it's what I am most interested in. Um, Councilwoman.
I just wanted to wrap and say that that is exactly what we did a few times uh in the downtown corridor. So that was just for the downtown, but I appreciate the idea of just um a more global approach.
Thank you. Councilwoman Catalina, and then Councilman Rutherford.
Yeah, ju- just as Councilwoman McCartney was speaking, so um. Yeah, so we we kind of started that whole process. Like I said, it was a year-long process where, you know, four hundred. Uh, residents uh were surveyed, uh multiple meetings, a facilitator came in from a planning. Uh, from a planning firm. Um, and and just that last step wasn't followed through with an economic developer, so. Um, again, the exercise was done, it just wasn't fully, you know, implemented. Um, why an economic developer wasn't, you know, brought in then, I don't, I I don't know, because I didn't sit on the. Commission at that time. But um, obviously, funding, I'm sure, um was was due to the, well, I I can tell you right now. It it's funding, because these items are all expensive. So that's what I mean, it's going to be all depending on funding. So if we're able to. Fund this and do the whole package, the whole exercise, or we may not, we may only be able to do the economic development. A component of it. I think it's all going to see, you know, we just had a conversation about two hundred thousand dollars helping residents, so. Um, you know, there's there's a, there's a lot going on, a lot of important stuff, like that was my. Uh, I'll go back to my previous comment, not to prolong the evening or take the airtime. But, you know, we have to prioritize. And so if we can't do it all, at least at the very least. I'm I'm asking that we move forward with that economic development piece, because we have data. We we have information from prior experiences, but we you need that that one last piece to. To move forward with. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Rutherford.
I think, Council President, in response to my colleagues, I I think the. Goals and the scope of an economic developer versus a planner are different. And we uh by having a planner, we get to have someone who is taking a holistic approach to. Development townwide, not just in the downtown corridor. And with regard to the charrettes, it is, I think, you know, I fully support it. Um, we have thousands of residents in that corridor. Um, and it's also a project that will affect everyone in town. So the scale of the feedback is going to be a little bit different than what the downtown alliance has done. In the past, and I'm not trying to pull the idea of what the downtown alliance did or say that it wasn't valuable. I'm sure it was. I wasn't around at that time, at least as a council. Um, but I think what we're doing on Main Street right now, if if we want to incur pushback from residents, if we want people to. Um, uh, be skeptical of the process, uh, or we want people to uh not be supportive of some of the. Uh, votes or the uh, the the way that we get through this process. Um, then we should eliminate their their voice. If if we want them to feel a part of the planning, if we want them to um have full knowledge and understanding of. The process and be included in that and have some of their ideas actually executed upon. Um, which will give them greater buy-in and su- and give us greater support for the project. Then we should have the charrette. And 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 just zooming out for a minute, a lot of the challenges that we've had to face um in governance. Has been because we've not communicated well with stakeholders in town. Um, we take a very top-down approach uh to the decisions that we make, a- and I think this is such a large decision.
Yeah.
Uh, that we have to go from the bottom up. We have to speak with residents, incorporate their ideas, listen to their feedback. Um, we have a very well-educated um 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 population. Uh, we've got folks that are, uh, you know, experts in their field, that can offer real, sound, solid advice. Um, and help, you know, get a better outcome. So I am for more communication, um and I am for a global approach to development in town. You know, part of the problem with having the resources we need to address all of the different issues in town. Is because we have such a heavy reliance on residential property taxpayers. The town planner can look at that. Look at the mix of commercial ratables and residential uh ratables as well. And make recommendations about various parts of town and how we can develop in a way that makes sense for us, not just right now, but for the next ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years. Uh, so, you know, these things don't have to be mutually exclusive. A a town planner can have an economic development background or an economic development focus. Um, and so we can kind of kill two birds with one stone if we are, uh, you know, deliberate about that process. Uh, and so, you know, I'm not saying we don't need one, uh, but we certainly do need a town planner. And I absolutely support uh charrettes uh for. For the.
And and to that point, Councilman, I know that, you know, obviously, we're we're talking about now twenty-one acres versus what. Main Street corridor is, it's quite significant, um, an investment that the township governing body, us. Um, have committed to and and have asked the residents on faith to support us in that. And so I am not willing, which is what I said in my email, to continue to go on faith. I want the the residents' voices at the table. It is certainly very necessary, and I believe that the way we move forward is by investing in our township. But that also means to invest in our in our township by listening to the residents. And it's not that, you know, I mean, I I don't. It it's not a matter that the residents are going to say, yeah, we want a Starbucks, yes, we want A, B, or Z. It's listening to the administration's priorities. To the administration's goals, understanding the economic um viability of the businesses that are in that downtown. Um, understanding what our goals are and 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 moving forwards, having having a meeting of the minds in the middle somewhere, if you will. The fact that um we don't have a planner has always been an issue for me. I don't believe that we've done enough. I don't believe we've done well without a planner. Um, and Councilwoman McCartney, you you just said you didn't agree with something in my email. Uh, about you not supporting the economic development. I think I did, I developed, I put slash planner.
Um, I think that's what I I, we do have a planner. Um, we do have.
We have a consultant. We don't have someone in Town Hall that oversees the day-to-day melding of all of the different projects, and we have a lot going on in town. So I, we we do not have a, we have a consultant, consulting planner.
A consult, a very competent consulting planner, yes, we do, who has been involved with the town for a number of years. Um, what I didn't, I I I separated the two.
Okay.
That's all I was saying.
Okay, just I didn't want to confuse you, or like I was saying, the reason I said that I pointed you out, because I know that when we voted for. The line item budget for the economic developer, you voted no against that. That's why I recalled that you weren't supportive of it. Um.
I voted no for the. For the economic developer.
Okay, okay. So then that was my.
I was separating the two.
All right, good. Um, but I I still do believe we need one. Uh, Councilwoman uh Catalina, and then Councilwoman Williams.
Yeah, I'll 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 keep it short. So, you know, I'm just, I don't want the public to walk away from our conversation being confused, because I'm a little confused. So I'm hearing here, um, you want to hire a consulting, a a a consult. You want to replace the current planner, or you just want to hire, okay. So you want to hire a good, another consulting firm that.
What I, what I had said was, I don't, I don't know if Paul Greigle's firm has the capacity to do charrettes. Because typically, charrettes are not just meetings, but they'll set up a a link on our own township website. They do surveys that way, prior to.
We did that.
Prior to COVID. Prior to COVID, they would do canvassing, text messaging, physical meetings, and bring everybody together. And come up with a plan for that. What I'm saying that, and I I respect and understand that 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 downtown West Orange Alliance did that. Four or five years ago, but that was not talking about twenty-one acres that we have committed our tax dollars to. So it's not about, if if Paul Greigle's firm does it, if he has the capacity to do it, I'm I'm fine.
Okay, no, 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 I I I'm good with that. I I I just was hearing from Councilman Rutherford. We don't have somebody in the office full-time. So I just wanted to see where everybody, you know, there's a few different kind of. Conversations that I was hearing from from you, from each of you. So. Uh, I'm okay with moving forward with that, well, but again, it's all about the funding of it, you know, so. I want to, you know, if we have to pick and choose of what we can and can't get done, I'm not saying I would exclude the public by no means. In fact, I set up monthly meetings to downtown that we invite everyone in the corridor, that people don't even attend the meetings. But um, but that was done five years ago, and it was advertised all throughout the township. Granted, we're in a different position now, because a lot more activity is going on. We made four hundred people back then, I think, was a pretty good response. Um, you know, hopefully, we'll get a lot more, a bigger response, because we have a lot more activity going on now. And um, you know, uh, I just, you know, just wanted to hear where everybody was at with this. I didn't know if you want to replace the current planner. Or and bring, make it a full-time position, or just add, whether his firm could do it or not, this activity, so.
So, so a charrette is just that, it's just whoever.
I'm clear, I'm clear now. Thank, thank.
You're welcome. And Mister Gross and I have spoken about, you know, let let's get past this part. And then we'll start looking at what are the goals and create an RFP or RFQ um. To be able to seek out what we, and obviously, that'll be done with the council's input, with the administration's input, before that even goes out. You know, and and I've said it before, if Paul Greigle's um firm has the capacity to do that, I mean, he is our township, I'm. I did, I just think it's necessary. Um, thank you, Councilwoman Catalina, uh, Councilwoman Williams. And then Councilman Rutherford and Councilwoman. And then Councilman Rutherford and Councilwoman.
My question is more so for the administration, um, while we're having the discussions on the charrette and the economic planner developer. Um, wanted to ask if we have a strategic plan for the township. I know we have our 10-year master plan, um, but just curious if, if we have ever put together and how long ago. Um, that we put together a strategic plan for the municipality.
We have, obviously, uh, from a planning perspective, that's usually, uh. What, what, what municipalities do is in terms of the master plan. Having said that. Often, and, and, or from time to time, the towns may find themselves in a situation where they may want to do. Uh, additional planning, you know, not, not, not formal planning, but. Map, mapping out the future of, future direction of. Uh, a particular aspect of municipal life or the municipal. So it's not unheard of to be done. Uh, it is not something that the Township of West Orange has done.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Um, Councilwoman Williams, does that complete your questions?
Um, it completes my question. I guess I would follow that up with just commentary. Um, you know, I understand the, the purpose of a charrette, I am supportive. I'm certainly, um, willing to entertain the concept and interested in the pursuit of an economic developer. So that we can tie, um, the entire community into one, um, organized. Uh, function. Um, but what I'm, you know, a little curious about is. It seems that we keep, um. We're, we're continuing to grow and push forward, and this issue is continuing to come back up over and over again. Um, I, I really would like to see us as a council and an administration. Um, come to some type of conclusion or definitive direction. We have, we, we have development going on in every inch of West Orange. And I am absolutely, just based on employment alone, pro-development. Um, but I do see the way we are going about it very disconnected. And that's appearances from the outside looking in, right? And so maybe, um, a better way to communicate some of our needs and desires. Um, might be to start with what is actually going on in an update. I think I've seen before in some of our, um, previous meetings before I joined the council. Where we did have updates on what was going around or on in our community. And then we started focusing on the Edison area, and we do a lot of, um. You know, information on downtown, um, but if we could get our reporting. Um, to be more consistent with what's going on around our entire community. I think that would give us, as well as the public, um, more information. It would also help us. As the elected officials have a better comprehensive understanding of what is going on in our community. I think we're asking for an economic developer and some of these other things because of a, a lack of information and communication. But if we were able to just tweak, I'm not saying that's the only place that improvement is necessary. But in, but communication is something that we, every one of us, es- especially us newer elected officials have harped on, right? Is communicating more, communicating more. Um, so I think there are some baby steps that we can do in the interim. Until we get to a conclusive destination point on what we're going to do. Um, so I personally am asking the administration if when we continue to have the remaining meetings, I know we get a planning board report. Um, I know we get the minutes, but we may need to, um, certainly just categorize a special. Part of our meetings so that we could give some type of developmental update on, on what's going on in our community.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Williams. Um, and to, to your last point, it's not the administration. As a council president, I helped create that agenda and I took that. Um, redevelopment, um, update that we, we would ask Mr. Sayers for every meeting and things don't change that quickly. Uh, I just did not feel it beneficial to continue to hear that, you know. Two hundred and thirty apartments were rented or one hundred and ninety-nine apartments were rented. So I think that. If we want to be better informed, and I, it's something that I certainly do, and I, I'm sure you all do, um. A better way to keep the residents informed is report out what we get, what information we seek out for them. As elected officials, you know, we do go to our administration net to get these updates and perhaps, um, updating the website. So. On the, um, on the website, there is a tab for redevelopment. And if you go in there, and it is updated with everything that is going on, everything that we approve, um, that information is, is there. That's how I know. Um, what the redevelopment, um, projects throughout the township are. And perhaps we just need to highlight that, um, differently on our website to give, uh, more access, um. To residents to that. But, um, I did not feel it pertinent to have, um, Mr. Sayers. Give us an update every two weeks and nothing really changes in that time. That was my, that was my, my personal preference, not the administration's.
Certainly, I think I've heard you state that as well. Um, and I'm not suggesting that that was something that. You know, we shouldn't have pursued or you shouldn't have pursued. I'm just suggesting as an effort for us to, if we're talking about a, a, a planner, an economic developer. If we're talking about communication, if we're talking about making sure everyone is understanding what is going on in our community. Um, then some of the onus lies on us and how we communicate that information as well. And so, you know, excluding it is certainly something that you thought could be done. But it could have also been manicured or tailored in a different capacity as well. Needless to say, it's neither here nor there. I'm just saying, we just need to provide the information to the residents as they're asking it. As we're asking it, it needs to be provided to us, and then we can all understand better what's going on in our community.
So again, um, we'll agree to disagree in that regard. I agree that we should communicate better 100%. I am very active on social media. I don't, I don't, um, post things that I don't think that, um. I, I share as much as I can on social media and email, um, residents that I am in touch with. Um, but I would prefer to, and, and these are two totally different things, right? Keeping. Everyone in the loop as opposed to the economic developer that we're talking about and the charrette that we're talking about, all different things. Um, but I certainly think that, um. Updating the website with more frequency would, would be more helpful because not everybody, um. Is able to join the council meetings and those who are on the council meetings are, you know, here. And then when you play the video, I don't know if you've noticed, that whole consent, um, agenda that we are, um. That, that we engage in initially when we have these reports and things, that's not part of the video. So people thereafter don't hear that.
Perhaps, I mean, is that, you know, there's so many different things that we could do. And, and maybe that should be something that we decide to include.
It is part of the agenda. I mean, it's, it's four hours. We got four hours on the tape.
I, I have not seen it. When I looked the last time, it, it did not have that, it did not.
I think we got five hours. Yeah.
I did not see it the last couple of times that I've looked. Okay. Um, all right. Is that it for you, Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Mr., I'm sorry, Councilman Rutherford.
Uh, thank you, Council President. I want to thank, you know, all of us for the robust debate. This is what is. Even when we don't agree, we can have this conversation and, and figure out where the weak spots are and where we're. Right. Um, but to the specific point of a town planner, it's my understanding that we approved one two years ago. And that one has been in the budget, I think $150,000 to, to hire one for the town. Has been in the last two budgets. Uh, so maybe I missed that, but, or, or.
So Councilman Rutherford, I, I was just sorry to interrupt you, but yes, we do have a line item. It's about $185,000, I think. I forget. It's in that area.
No, seventy-five thousand.
But that was seventy-five thousand when we did a late budget, half the year. So nobody's nowhere for seventy-five thousand. Um, but the, the mayor does not support a planner. Um, an economic developer with planning background or expertise was a compromise.
Yeah.
That, that was a compromise.
So, so, I mean.
That was the 150,000.
We, we can, we can, if, if, if we put it in the budget, if we had agreed on one, and I wasn't on the council. If we agree and we put it in the budget, people are expecting us to execute on that, like. And if we're gonna do something different than that, that requires a level of communication and then another level of agreement. So, so in this process, let's avoid all of that, right? When we agree, let's execute, let's not agree in, 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 you know, in public. Or agree and put something in writing and then not execute on it. Because people are holding us accountable and we are already on the hook for a tremendous amount of tax dollars. And so any of that kind of behavior is going to be looked disfavorably upon each one of us. So if we say we're gonna do something with regard to downtown or anywhere else in town, when we are on the hook for this amount of money. I think town, I think residents are expecting us to honor what we agree to, regardless of how we came to that agreement. If it's three-two or five-zero, it doesn't matter. If we agree, we should go forward. Um, and that's really my point. I mean, we're belaboring this thing, so.
I know, but I, I just also want to be very clear that it, it's hiring, right?
We don't hire and fire people.
It's an administrative prerogative. So while the governing body did, and the mayor did agree. In a compromise, no planner, but an economic developers with some planning expertise. It was a compromise I was happy to take so long as we can get somebody. The planning, the, the hiring didn't happen, and it was not, and, and Mr. Gross will tell you, it is not, and if the mayor was here, he'd tell you. It is not, for lack of trying to bring it up as often as possible. Uh, 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 maybe a thorn in their, in their side far too, far too often, but unfortunately.
So we're taking resumes for that position? Is that what we're doing?
So I spoke to the mayor yesterday and we are going to be back on track. Um, I followed up. Um, with respect to that email that I shared with all of you. Um, so we will, yes. That's the conversation we had yesterday.
Right. And the last point was that, that is, it doesn't matter who does the charrette. The point is that we.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, I'm done talking.
Uh, Councilwoman McCartney and then Councilwoman. You're welcome.
Well, I, you know, truthfully, I thought we were already here, uh, at this point. Not going back and rehashing planner and economic developer, like, you know, I feel that we approved the, the creation of the economic developer. And we keep saying we don't have a plan. Just a month ago, two months ago in September. We did approve a plan to expand the redevelopment zone. For the Film District, the Edison Law Residential District, the Edison Mixed Use District. Uh, Historic District, we did approve a plan. So here, I'm thinking this is the jumping off point. To find that person that will pull all of this together. So that's really why I re, I thought that we re, reinstated the Economic Development Commission. Uh, and the fact if we do want to have a paid position, that position, the $150,000 that was allocated. Would then help, as I say, market or recruit the plan that we just approved. So I really thought that we were at that jumping off point right now since we already approved this plan. And now, just last week, even extended it. So, uh, we are, we are at that point now. To find the person that's going to market and recruit this. I believe that we have a plan already. Uh, and now it needs to be implemented with ideas now that we know what the zones are.
And, and that's, the implementation of ideas would come from a charrette, and that's why we were asking for that.
Right, yes. I agree.
Thank you. Councilwoman Castellino.
So, and, and just, just to wrap this up, so to Councilman Rutherford's point, or whoever mentioned the strategic plan. Or maybe Councilwoman Williams, um, you know, that, that was part of the plan if we got the NPP. So now we have to pivot. Bring in an economic developer, work with the, uh, um, you know, work with the community. And, you know, we, we, we need to move forward, but a strategic plan has to be implemented, no matter what route we go. We, we need that strategic plan to be implemented, um, moving forward, so.
100%. I'm, I'm gonna take us to one last piece of conversation. I don't know if, um. Chief Abbott is still on. I see his, his name on the screen, but I hope he didn't walk away from the screen. I know that we had, um. Public comment questions with respect to, um, hey, Chief, thanks for joining us again. Hi. Well, during public comment, I'm not sure if you were able to, um, catch, but one of the questions was, was with respect to. Um, those, um, police officers who are on unpaid leave. What does, uh, how, how are you working those schedules and what does overtime look like?
So, I don't know if John has the figures handy. I wasn't prepared to answer that question tonight, so I don't know what the dollar cost of that is versus. You know, backing out what isn't being paid and so on. Um, but, uh, you know, we've had no trouble filling the overtime. We've had less police, fewer police officers than what we currently have in the past. We've had more, you know, it's, it's. The one, the one good thing about it is you can always hire overtime and fill those vacancies.
So that, that's how we, I, I hope that that answers the published question with respect to, um, how we're, um. Scheduling, it, it, it's overtime. And I don't expect you to have that figure either, Mr. Gross. Um, I'll follow it with you tomorrow or the day after. Um, to get those numbers and then we can post. Um. I don't, uh, Councilwoman McCartney, your hand is still up or is it, um, new up? Okay. Um, I don't have anything else for the good of the order, uh, Councilman Rutherford. I just see your.
Just wanted to say a quick thank you to both the West Orange Fire Department and the West Orange Police Department. We had a gas leak in Bel Air today. They were right on the spot, um, you know, and I, I just appreciate how. They were willing to interact with me as I came in. I didn't know what was going on. Streets were blocked off, emergency vehicles everywhere. Um, and, you know, those kind of things don't always have happy endings. So thank you to, to, uh, West Orange Fire Department and Police Department, uh, for their quick response.
Awesome to hear. Um, any of my other council colleagues have any, um, anything else for the good of the, now?
Just remind, um, West Orange residents that we are doing, um, grab and go Saturday, Thanksgiving. Um, so if you would like to make a donation or come and volunteer and help out our community, um, please reach out twilliams@westorange.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCartney.
Yes, thank you. Um, I didn't mention the West Orange Environmental Commission. So twice a year in the spring and in the fall, um, we have a toy drive. And thank you to all the residents that have been donating their plastic toys to keep them out of landfills. Because we have a 20-foot trailer at the environmental center. So, uh, the Environmental Commission partners with Second Chance Toys. And Second Chance Toys is an organization that is affiliated with 12 different charitable organizations. So, uh, this Sunday, between one and four, we're looking for volunteers. We are going to empty that trailer. Residents are welcome to come and take what they please. Um, early holiday shopping, you can call it. If there's something there, a lot of the, a lot of the, you know, it is one man's. Trash is another man's treasure. Uh, and there are quite a few items that are. Really nice toys that their kids have just outgrown. So residents are free to come and take what they please or donate more. We are going to clean and disinfect them, and then we will donate them to Second Chance Toys and they will find the. One of those charitable organizations. So twofold, thank you for everyone that has filled that 20-foot trailer. There are a lot of toys in there. Uh, we'll keep them out of the landfill. And you're welcome to stop by between one and four on Sunday to scoop it out, swap and shop. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Night, everybody.